It's in here.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. And then call everything to order.
All right. Well, good morning, everybody. Got a little late start. Meeting shall come to order. The date is August 24th and it is 10:34. Um, we have an agenda. Usually I don't see it, but we're going to, um, to approve the agenda. Oh, I do want to make a change. We all have pelvic comment at the very end. And we will also have a, uh, an executive session at one o'clock with our lawyer. So moving on, uh, do I need to read this? The purpose, special purpose?
Yes.
Okay. The purpose of this special meeting is to discuss current and potential future projects for the 2024 comprehensive speed updates, a roundtable discussion about the future direction of the court over the next five years, and then our executive session. There's a special litigation. Um, and I think that's about it.
I did ask what time they can hear.
Oh, yeah, can you hear us?
Uh, can you hear us?
Both on Zoom, can you hear?
Dan, you are muted. And Edric, you are muted.
You can self hum it up there, Dan.
Dan is unmuted.
We have a good copy.
Oh, good, thank you. And Edric?
I just asked him to unmute.
Okay.
He might not be there because he had other obligations.
Um, also, I need one thing, oh, the roundtable that would cover the, uh, other stuff. Okay, great. So the scheme of partner improvements.
Okay, I, uh, put that one document up on the website and gave it to all of you at the last meeting. Greg has since, um, created it as a fill in the blanks thing, but we can change it. It's on the website now where people can, um,
That's the survey, correct, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the survey where people can download it and fill it in and email it to us.
How long has it been on there, sorry?
Uh, he just put it up here. Either Monday or yesterday. Cause he didn't, he had to do the fill in the blank part of it.
Okay.
But I don't remember which day it was.
Well, through reason, period.
But I think it, I think it was yesterday that went out. Day Thursday, right? So it would have been Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, lost the date somewhere. But anyway, um, you know, but that can be changed if we change different projects and then.
Okay. I have a copy of the survey, do you guys have a copy?
Yeah, what I was hoping to see here, I mean, we know the project for the most part, I guess, the brighter, but can we have a hard copy of some of the projects in our comprehensive scheme?
No, I don't, I didn't print that because until we, uh, do the comprehensive scheme.
Yeah. Shoot, I haven't pulled it.
And you should have, uh, a copy of that from last.
Oh, we do.
It's, it's, it's online, isn't it?
Yeah.
You know, I can get online when you hear.
You can?
Yeah, it should be on our website.
We should.
I'll try that then.
I could ask downstairs, but we should be able to log into their web.
Well, I am logged in.
Oh.
It's KVA guest and password's 1234123.
You probably shouldn't be saying that.
We're not probably going to change it again.
Okay.
Well, I want to take a look at it here, um, real quick. And the survey, of course, is going to jog my memory. I'm not sure where you guys want to start or.
Well, I'd start with the first question and, you know, so what do you think?
Well, I, I, I would like to add something. As, uh, as all you know, I've been working on the broadband expansion.
Yeah.
Uh, for Mason County. And I was on a Department of Commerce meeting and, uh, as the executive director, uh, if you're ever interested, these are, uh, great meetings to attend. It's just very good talk.
You're good.
Too many Christmas things all over the place. Uh, but, uh, I would like to, the force have a lot of say in this broadband expansion in Washington State. And so does nonprofits and being part of the port and being part of a nonprofit. I'm seeing that Mason County is lacking heavily in our engagement into broadband expansion. So, uh, that would be a discussion I'd like to see. I was on that meeting yesterday at my house. And Lakeland Village is considered one of the best wifi spots in Mason County. And I'm going in and out every five seconds. It was just horrible. Uh, so I'd like to see the board getting more engaged in broadband expansion. And I have some ideas and legal, there's a lot of grant money out there. Where it's going to take a little bit of effort. I don't see anybody in Mason County except the PUDs and they're working on their own turpims. Uh, I'd like to see the Port of Allen really pick it up. And, and I'll, I'll make the contacts with the Port of Duwato. Uh, there, they need it, the school district need it. I spoke to Dana, uh, the school superintendent. Uh, if we ever have another shutdown like we did a couple of years ago, we have to have, uh, broadband expansion. And that ties into the regional transportation plan. Uh, as I spoke at the last meeting last week, is that if we get people to just engage in the internet, you can get information that you need instead of driving down to Shelton or driving to Bramerton. And, and that frees up some traffic space. Uh, I know it's minimal, but at the same time, if I need to get a copy of my birth certificate, I'd rather do it online than have to drive so far. So, uh, but anyways, it's, it's, it's interesting. Like I said, uh, our congressman Derek Kilmer is on the front page of that. He's working very hard and I'm very proud of him for doing that. Uh, I'd like to see the Port of Allen. I don't see any other port doing it. Uh, we can take the lead and it's not hard. And we do have some money tucked aside to get a grant writer to do some of this stuff. So, uh, anyways, that's my two cents of, I, I do believe it's a good project for our port. So I'd like to see that on a comprehensive scheme. But we, although the Port of Allen is pretty unique is that we do have, if you look at our map, uh, we do have pretty good wifi coverage for the Port of Allen district. You get up to the Port of Duwato, you get up to the Port of Lissabon. That's where they lack. And I'd like to see it's all partnered together, get it done. So, uh, but, and I don't want to put it on staff. I, I think us as commissioners can do a little bit of work to get this thing slouched through. So, uh, it's not only the hard cables that go through. It's, I, I want somebody, like at the Port of Allen days, I was trying to get a grant to do a digital navigator.
Yeah.
So at Allen Days, we have a booth there that's promoted by the Port of Allen, promoted by United Way, promoted by all the ports, EDC, whatever. And this person sits there and I walk up and say, hey, I can't figure out my cell phone. This person can figure it out. And I'm trying to find a person that's bilingual and a person that can just, uh, go to these different events. And you can walk up and say, hey, this is what's going on. I need a little bit of help. That's a digital navigator. They do it in Grace Harbor, we can do it up here in Mason County, so.
I think that's great.
I was going to ask you what we can do and is that something that maybe we could hire a grant writer to partner with all these other ones? You know, the Duwato and Hood's Port, that's.
Sure, we have a grant writer and, uh, she's working, she worked with me through the United Way. And United Way is going to take the lead. I talked to one of our commissioners and, uh, we're going to use that money. Uh, I want her to introduce, I want you all meet her. Uh, she's a wonderful technical writer.
You think after one of the meetings sometime?
I'm, I hope so. So.
I agree.
I spoke to her husband yesterday and, uh, hopefully she can. She is, uh, you throw out ideas and say, what about this? What about that? And she could put it down in technical terms that I don't have the expertise for. So she's a, she's a great person. I enjoy working with her. And if you don't know, she got $59,000 in the Mason County by her and I working on these grants, so.
Excellent.
Yeah. Thank you for letting me speak a little bit.
No, that's wonderful. So I love to see about that.
So we want to go ahead and add that to the?
Yeah.
I would say yes. And because we are talking about.
Well, I know WPPA is active in this as well.
Mm-hmm.
And some of the ports in Eastern Washington are like the major broadband providers there. You know, Joe Bory from, uh, I think it's Port of Pasco was real active. He did that kicked off, I don't know, five years ago.
Well, there you go. Bring somebody into that, into fold to know what that journey looks like already along with the writer you're talking about. And we bring in the Mason County ports into that situation and that meeting. And now you've got quite a bit of energy.
Yeah, and like Ted said, there's a lot of grant money available. I have a copy of the report that Ted's group put together. Uh, if I know we're going to talk about this, I would order it all to you, but I'll send it to you when we go back to the office. I'll have to scan it and then I can.
There's a couple of other reports that came out. Uh, they combined all the county, um, broadband action team reports. And it's like 259 pages. And it's a wonderful document. Uh, I just want to see Mason County stand out. So, uh, and maybe the Port of Allen just needs to take the lead. And I'm, I'm more than happy to spearhead that through. But, uh, I, I just think we're a couple of steps behind. Uh, and not the Port of Allen, but as a county, we're a couple, that's why I.
Well, you know, Kitsap County is really well covered. And I want to say 15 years ago, um, I was part of a group that became the West Sound Technology Association. And they were real active in getting fiber everywhere in Kitsap. And, uh, if y'all remember Donnie Feeding who facilitated our meeting way back when, she was the head of that group for five or six years. And her husband Charles was real involved in it as well. And they were the people that, you know, were the drivers for this, kind of like Ted is trying to be here. So, I think, you know, and it really helped jumpstart some of Kitsap's technical growth.
Are you aware of the Recompute, um, grant?
Yes, I am.
Now, is that something that would qualify under this too? Cause I, I haven't, I haven't looked at all of the grants. They're still working on trying to apply for everything?
I have to look at it more.
But it might qualify for some of that for infrastructure.
I have to look at it a little bit. I, I am aware of the Recompute, uh, what EDC is trying to do.
Yeah.
But I have to look and see what we can do. But with regards to broadband expansion, so.
Well, um, Recompute is a program that's federally funded, um, to try to pull communities, you know, hold communities together for infrastructure and bigger projects where they're all not doing their own thing, but kind of all together. So that's what EDC is pulling together. They hired consultants to get this Recompute, uh, grant together. And so, um, you might take a look or we could, we could maybe, I'm really bad at trying to explain Recompute.
Okay, no, I.
WPPA also is aware of this Recompute. Matter of fact, it's in the latest, um, manifest. They even mention it.
So that's another aspect of this.
Yeah, it could be, I think. I didn't look to see what they're applying for yet.
Well, the idea that is.
Big projects.
When we lay this out, with the WPPA, his contact there, they mentioned it, Ted's the technical grant writer, and your knowledge of where you want to go with that, the Mason County Port for bringing them in, the Mason County Court bringing them in could be to follow the EDC with Recompute program. And there's, there's your trigger, there's a kickoff right there.
Right.
For that idea, trying to bring all the stakeholders in.
And WPPA will support whatever we do.
Yeah.
In fact, speaking of stakeholders, that's what they're having today in the same time this is going on.
Really?
Because I was supposed to be there, but, um, it's the Recompute stakeholders.
Okay.
So they're working on that. Um, one of the things, you know, about this first class destination soccer and baseball combination sports complex, I have to say, I don't, to me, that's something that I, I mean, it sounds like a great idea, but I don't, I don't know if I'd want that within five years or anything. So I'd rather put broadband up ahead or, you know, all the other ones I think are doable and something that we desperately need.
Well, the, the big roadblock to that is the time and the land.
Yeah.
Buying, you know, acquiring the land. The rest of it, there's money for that. There's all kinds of money from various sources for it. But it's a case of finding a minimum of 10 acres.
Yeah.
And what I'm wondering is if there's not somebody in the community that's willing to either buy it and donate it or that owns it and donate it.
But where's their 10 acres available?
Yeah, available.
You know, I, I look at that and I, I would love to see it.
Yeah.
Where is there, where is their property? Well, I can tell you it's out of the way. It's off the Duwato to Huya out there, more up there in the power line, you know, that's where you're going to get the bigger.
Where we want it is, the ideal spot would be on Highway three, right near the Kitsap-Mason County line. Um, you know, but Overton owns all that property.
Yeah, he does.
I think they're just sitting on it.
Right there.
Waiting for the bypass.
Right there by the base of the. Well, if you look off block, you're on the road.
But some of the acreage there that I did look at.
But it is in UCA.
Yeah.
Was Sand Hill Park.
Yeah.
Um, you know, got the baseball field there.
Okay.
And, uh, they own land on the other side of the, of the street there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, plus there's a big thing, it's like a soccer field there, it's just a big empty space. You know, if we could acquire that from the school district, you know, that might be a worthwhile touch.
That is not a bad, right towards the prison, right?
Too close, yeah.
Yes, it's close.
So, you know, if we're in charge of supposedly economic development, every tournament day for.
Good point.
You know, sports development brings, on, on average, $75,000 a day at your community. So.
Yeah, that's true.
That would jumpstart like motels and.
Wow, I believe it. My, my grandmother, I go to the school, you know, collect soccer team, it's, it's just absolutely insane.
Port of Calama has one of these that does really well.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it's, it's off the main drag, it's off the beaten path. Uh, and I was surprised when I saw, you know, when I first got this job, I went down there and met with him. And, you know, Mark has been kind of like a mentor to me in a lot of ways, you know? I went and just looked at their facility, but I asked him specifically about that. He took me there. And it's over the freeway and around and up a hill and down another hill. But it's, it's got everything, including equestrian stuff.
It does?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, it's got a horse barn and some trails.
Need more of that because, you know, there aren't the horse people out there anymore.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
So, you know, they, this was originally patterned after Luke Jensen's sports partner, Vancouver.
It was a great partner.
Terrific facility. That sits on 10 acres. So, but the, the problem they have there, they want to expand it, but they don't have enough room.
Room.
So, and the one end, Calama, I think is on 25 acres.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea because, um, for the reason you said, you know, and also providing, uh, you know, kids locally. I mean, these events that they do, we're driving, they're going all over the place. And, um, there is a, yeah, I think there are a couple of spots actually.
Families travel to all these things. They know when Bryce was playing soccer, we were gone every weekend at some point.
Yeah.
And same thing with him playing baseball, both, you know,
Yeah.
High school and, uh, American Legion ball. We were, we were gone a lot for those games.
You think about Thurston County, Pierce County.
Shale is a huge facility.
Jefferson County, Park County, you know, it's like, and then, yeah, we're kind of a central area in the.
I mean, the only thing that we have is the.
On the side of the. MRC.
MRC, I couldn't, I, I.
I can't say.
My brain kept saying MRSC and I knew that, that went down. Um, but that, that facility is booked all the time.
It is. We get to think about how much time, like, what we want to do, your, your, it's all about time. Cause we know there are grants, there's money out there that's pursued properly to do a lot of these ideas we got, right? So realistically, over the next five years, we want to prioritize a little bit today, I think. But I love the idea.
Something else I thought about with this was talking to the school district. You know, they have the baseball field and football field and all that stuff that weren't spot. And they didn't have to maintain that, but could still use it. I wonder if they'd be willing to give it to them.
Wonder.
I don't think it's big enough. I don't, I, you know, personally, I don't know if that would be a good idea. I'd rather have brand new, not brand new, but you know, something that you can expand. And, you know, they're going to put a roundabout on the other side, so it would be too much.
Not to mention the freeway that's coming right over there eventually.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, there's, there's not been a definite.
I know.
Place where it's going to be.
The Sand Hill is a great idea.
Yeah, I think Sand Hill area.
Really good.
Would you like me to explore that?
I would.
Report back.
What do you think? I, I agree, except I looked at the traffic flow around Sand Hill. That is one of the most, one of the dangerous intersections.
It is, so that would be part of it. You'd have to fix that.
And then I also look at, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I also looked at the lack of lodging we have up here. And I know when my daughters were playing sports, we stayed in a hotel room, you know, they stayed in a hotel room with their team. We have one hotel, but, uh, we don't have any lodging really.
Kitsap County is where they'd be staying, no sleep, you know?
Well, if, if we do build it, then the numbers would work for hotels.
Yeah, the commercial enterprises are coming in going, wow, there's, there's something here we can, we can.
Cause that's a lot of times what stops it, you know, that there's not the numbers in belt there.
Yeah, and then I know real estate people out there will yell over it.
You know, I could ask Randall downstairs, he came to run this association. He was an executive with Marriott for years and opened a number of hotels and stuff.
Is that interesting? You want me to ask him to come up, but we could ask him.
One question, isn't the property around Sand Hill, uh, DNR?
Part of it.
Part of it?
Part of it, yeah.
But is part of it also school district or?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Well, then then.
And on the other side, the north end, obviously is all private.
Right, and all to the right hand side and actually.
That's the right hand side, yeah.
Some of the property go all the way down to the pride.
But there is, there is at least one golf field over there, you know, little league sized golf.
Well, I know the county has a problem maintaining that piece of property up there. Yeah, that's one of those maintenance upkeep and everything else. So if the port were to ever do something like this, I mean, that's a huge expense. I'm going to wonder who, cause I don't, who would maintain it?
Yeah.
Who would participate? Because we now have the county has Sand Hill property and then the port has this complex. How do we get somebody to maintain it? How will pay for it? Uh, so that's.
Wouldn't it pay for itself?
Yeah, it picks up that energy and that time to coordinate all that.
User fees.
Yeah.
You know, it'll generate user fees and we put in concession standards. There's already a concession here in there actually, but.
So is there an organization that comes in and just go ahead and like feeds other areas that were, these projects taken on? And then, you know, they build these facilities like we're talking, talking about, considering. Are there organizations that come in and maintain it and, uh, it's automatically part of the, the whole?
No, the owner, the way that Luke Jensen works, shown by the county and the county maintains it.
Oh.
But it's a moneymaker for them.
Okay.
In addition to the economic development.
Okay, so, okay. So it does fall into the county, it's be the county responsibility?
Owns that one, but, you know, all these soccer leagues, they all pay to play there. And baseball leagues pay to play there. And, you know, tournaments are pretty big business. And I know myself, I'm firing baseball, we get paid more for tournaments, so we get paid for this thing.
Yeah.
It's a great idea.
And, you know, it all comes out of the money that the facility makes.
Right. Well, I think we should look into it.
Yeah, and look at Overton property too, but, you know, that's, you're going to be paying a premium up there.
Mm-hmm. Well, in the two previous public surveys we done, this was number one project people wanted to see.
Really?
Yes.
I do, I, I will try to be brave and get down to some of the grocery stores and pass them out. Whatever, hands on is good. So we'll talk about that in the end and get some envelopes so people can mail them in or get a few store, printed on the back where you can just seal them and mail them home.
We can do that. Okay, now we have St. Levy charging stations at the Isle of Waterfront Park. We're still waiting on a decision from our CEO about that, so.
And I saw that there is another grant opportunity for that.
Yeah.
So, uh, it'd be nice.
What grant is that?
Department of Commerce.
Okay, good.
I mean, the kayak park is a perfect spot for that, but, you know, trying to convince our CEO of that. They're like pulling too.
That would be great because then they can sit and relax and.
Yeah, it's got the rest of it.
It's got picnic tables.
Yeah. Give you something to do when you're sitting there.
You're talking about the kayak park.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then they can go for a kayak run.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would be great.
Bring your electric kayak.
Yeah.
Well, I always, ever since I started, I wanted to go for a commercial enlightened industrial park. Got there almost, probably 15 years ago. And from there, you had a plan to land.
For what, I can zip that?
Uh, the commercial enlightened industrial park.
Oh.
Um, originally what we had thought about and had plans for was building, uh, like a starter building, incubator building. We sit out to get businesses started.
Good.
Um, other concepts have been, there were places that I saw in Tacoma that was a bank of, um, like garage, garages. And then they could have their storefronts, get bigger, outgrow it, new, new storefront come in. Um, again, it was land. And this would be key though, it's, it's something that would be, um, really important to have it close to industrial.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, up at Lobby Yard Road area, um, Overton property, I don't know what kind of grants are out there to do that.
I don't either exactly what I can find out.
Okay. Um. And again, it was incubator.
Yeah.
Was the first concept, it doesn't have to be that way, but, um, so to get other businesses started.
Yeah.
Cause I think the Port of Brevarton has done that before.
Well, yeah. Yeah, they go all, I don't know if they started that way, but they do, still have, so.
Yeah.
And they did build a brand new one right off the highway, a very big complex.
And they're real flexible with lease terms and stuff. I know, probably 20 years ago, uh, you know, I owned a number of those real estate magazines. And myself and another publisher looked into buying a printing press and we were going to put it out there. And they offered us a really good deal, you know, where the rent was really cheap on the front end. And then just, you know, increased until.
Yeah.
At the end of the lease, it hit what market value was, but.
Everything's negotiable, uh, even more flexible and negotiable until it gets competitive. It's kind of how, in other words, they want a frame for all business in. But, I mean, they bid on the diamond, it's a different topic, I guess. And, and so it's like, so they, if something's making money, they'll pay, uh, an additional cost for that facility. But the initial startup cost operating is very friendly.
Yeah, cause it was.
They'll do things like that, you know?
Yeah, it was going to be real expensive for us. We were buying a, going to try to buy a press from a printer that had gone bankrupt. They had a like three year old press. They had a like three year old press.
Right.
But the bank wouldn't sell us the press.
Wow.
Yeah, they, there is, there, there's a whole lot more to the story than.
Right.
That was, we weren't gonna be able to get the press for any reasonable price. And what we wanted to do was buy it for what he owed us.
The moral of that story is being creative for that idea.
But the Port of Bremerton was real anxious to work with us though.
Alright, so did, well, help me out here, so what are the other, um, wanna go through the comprehensive scheme? When I was trying to find it.
Yeah, I was trying to find it online either, I can't find it.
I didn't either. Do you have it on your?
I do, yeah, I have it, I can.
Is there any way you could email it now?
Yeah.
Name, don't print it downstairs, I mean, that's an idea.
Yeah, I can't get on my email here, I probably have to start.
I'm going to, I, I was able to get off.
Well, I went to Brandon, Brandon, yes, who's Brandon? It went to Brandon.
No, okay, alright, yeah, I'm online too.
Well, I'm online.
Uh-oh.
But I can't get to my email, it goes to a guy named Brandon Byron.
That's not good.
See?
Yeah, delete that, yeah.
Well, here, I can email this to all of you.
Or we can print it off.
Can I just type in my?
We're all working, I gotta tell you a story. Last night, I attended the North Mason High, uh, North Mason. School District, uh, kicked off, uh, to welcome, uh, parents and students back to school. And it was one of the best events I attended. It was amazing, uh, the school district did a wonderful job, welcoming parents and students back. And there were so many vendors, just informational vendors. Uh, and they all had stuff out to get to the kids and the parents. Uh, kids blowing buttholes, paint, paint frogs, uh, and then there was food trucks up there. Uh, even from Shelton, the radio, uh, prior came up, and there was other food trucks. And they had the best sweet corn, uh, and it was donated, uh, to them. It, it was just, the place felt like a, a fairground up at North Mason High School. And we had elected officials up there, the sheriff was up there, uh, Commissioner Dethlin was up there, Travis Coltoor. Uh, and the superintendent just had a smile on her face, and I had a smile. When we tore down at eight o'clock, uh, when we left, it was, kids were just having fun. So, it was a wonderful.
That's cool, yeah.
Um, it's J Scott at Fort of Allen dot com.
This is nobody, everybody.
Yeah, hi, Rob.
She, she's a tech genius here.
The what?
She's the tech genius here.
Okay.
I just emailed you all the comprehensive.
Okay.
That's nice.
That'd be cool, I, I get, it's easier for my eyeballs than my eyeball, which I do half my life anyway. Never thought in my life.
Do you have a, um, would, you, you have kids or?
They're all grown.
Yes, but you were there.
My socials provide this thing for all of us. So we just had all these socials provide that, or, and kids would come by and the parents, they're like. And I was telling my wife, I said, you know, Dana. That's a dollar saved here in all those states.
It was.
It, it was much more, yeah, it was really, the fire department was up there, they did their big, uh, deal, yeah. It was.
The high school?
Yeah, it was, they invited us through the United Way.
Well, I'm not getting any notices like Ed Amick, you know.
Where, where I guess through the United Way or Fort, uh, it was wonderful.
Yeah, cause I'm not getting any notices.
Yeah, Commissioner Dethlin and I spoke, and, uh, he was, just had a big smile on his face, that this is cool.
That's wonderful.
I wish I would've taken more, or, taken pictures, but, uh, it was just a wonderful event. And I gotta hand it to the, uh, North Mason School District staff. They did, all the teachers were out there running around, greeting kids, uh, and their parents. And it was a neat, neat deal.
So great.
Yeah, and it was nice to see in our community that, uh, we welcome back our children.
Yeah, thanks for being there, Ted, that's great.
No, it was, uh, United Way stuff, but it was fun, so.
Fantastic, okay, I just sent that to her down.
Yeah, and I got it.
Yeah, so, what about our mission statement? I think we need to revisit that. You know, that's gonna help with.
Were you just looking at it?
No.
Okay.
I, I'm just trying to find that a little bit.
Okay.
Um.
I think it's in the comp plan.
It is.
Okay. Yeah, okay, cool.
Um, I'm trying to find it here though, cause it might be goals and objectives, it might be under that. Actually, the comprehensive, the comprehensive, the comprehensive harbor, our scheme of harbor improvements. Is different than our goals and objectives, and our goals and objectives is a separate document, and that has mission statement.
I would like us to print that out and revisit that, because that's gonna help us formulate our priorities. Is to, um, revisit what, how, how do we wanna change or adjust? Our mission and our, our, uh, that's what I got at the left at the Oliver. One of the things that, um, I always go back to the basics, in order to build on a comprehensive fund, you have to revisit who we are, is what we wanna do.
Yeah.
And so can we print that out too?
The mission statement.
The goals and objectives.
I have goals and objectives, can you open it up? That's a separate document.
Well, the goals and objectives are at the end of the comp plan.
Well, let me take a look here, I thought it was a separate document. Oh, there we go, mission, missions, that's our mission statement. Is at the very end, mission of the Port of Allen is to strengthen and enhance the Port of Allen communities. Through business retention and recruitment, support of tourism and development of the infrastructure. Necessary for economic development. The Port of Allen District is authorized and is directed by the Board of Commissioners and the Lords of the RCO.
Go in.
Got it?
Yeah, I actually do, sorry, though, look at the end of that, okay, alright. Got it, you're fine.
I thought it was separate, but it was just at the end.
No, that, that, that is, um, I'm sorry that I.
No, it's good to bring it up.
Yeah, so, I wanna talk about that.
It's at the very beginning of goals and objectives.
Yeah, at the end of the document.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and we, she's making copies for us though.
Yeah, cool, she's making a copy for you.
I don't need that. I'm on that page, I, well, I wanna write on it.
Well, that's hilarious.
You wanna move on, um, to the indoor shooting plan, or you still wanna?
Don had a really good thought about that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the PUD is abandoning that building there on Highway Three that used to be a playground.
What are they gonna do with it?
I don't know, but if they're gonna surplus that, that might be a great.
Yeah, it's another empty, or another, wow, that's.
But do we get money?
I mean, I know they abandoned it, but I didn't know what they're gonna, that's a great idea.
Do you know much about it?
I don't, I don't, I, I, I think that, I just give it a thumbs up because that's a, would be an excellent.
You know that, you know the, the idea of an incubator back there with a, a, a facility where people could consider opening a start.
Well, that's another idea, just buy it for, yeah, that's true.
There's, there's, could be a multiple.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I don't know what's going on with that property, I, I was curious because I saw about five cars there last night. What the heck is going on? I know they, that property is no longer being used by the PUD.
And they're, and they're moving stuff out of there, you know, I see that, I don't wanna comment.
That would be, we should contact, that would be a wonderful.
Yeah. Okay, I'll try to.
Uh, I gotta find out who to talk to, uh.
Yeah, FUD.
The PUD.
Yeah.
We'd do two to go figure that out and then.
The thing to do that in the intergovernment, that guy over there.
Getting one term, yeah, I'll take one.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Are you the only one? No, I'm good, thank you.
Are you sure?
Yeah, are you sure too?
Okay.
Uh, wow, I didn't.
Yeah, that, that raised very hesitation, although we probably get some blowback if we're to have a shooting range across from the high school. But at the same time, it doesn't have to be. It was, I was in school.
I know.
And I wish we'd bring it back.
I agree.
You know, kids need to learn that guns are dangerous, be respectful of them, so, uh, but yeah, that'd be an excellent spot.
Well, RCO has money for shooting ranges.
That would be, how much property goes behind that fence area or that fence area hit? That's what we need to find out, because, uh, this can be, I mean, it's just an idea, right, but it's worth exploring. Because it doesn't have to just be that, um, it, it can be the incubator idea where we have, uh, uh. A, a steel structure, that, that, an incubator for small business to, to work out of, you know.
You know, we tried doing that twice with that little conference room in our office. And just, we tried doing it as, uh, well, what do they call them?
No, I know you got, you got co-op, it's a shared office, so there's a downtown of Bremerton, downtown Bremerton.
Well, there's a great one in Fallsville.
Yeah, and, and basically, it, uh, there are different fees and different costs, depending on how frequently you use it. Or how much, uh, support you need to front that.
Co-working facility, and that's in this plan as, you know, future idea.
So.
I went down, um, Port Shalest did one, and I went down there and met with Randy. And, you know, he showed me everything from soup to nuts about what they did, how they did it, why they did it. And, and it was making him a little bit of money, but it was brand new at the time. So I don't know, you know, he's gone from there now, it is a rich field, so I don't know, you know, if that thing's still open or what it's doing. Well, you have the one in Fallsville, it's called Vine, and it's, uh, next to Crab Creek Restaurant.
Oh, really?
Okay, that thing, that thing's fabulous, it's a really, really nice facility, and it's making money hand over fist.
I am, uh, hoping quickly to see what kind of property is what people need and profitable. That's interesting. PUD actually has two parcels in regard to that unit, two parcels.
Oh, you looked that up.
See, that's, there's a two and a half acre piece.
Oh, it is two and a half acres?
Well, one parcel, it's two parcels, oh darn it, I just lost it. Let me try it again here.
The, uh, shooting range were, uh, was, is gonna be indoor shooting range.
Yeah.
That, that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Like they have at the Port of Shelton.
They don't have one.
There, there is one there, but it's privately owned.
Oh, okay, I used to use it, it always come out there feeling like I'm in a caked lead.
Yes, and that's a, they had one down in Olympia.
Ventilation.
Yeah, ventilation fails.
And ventilation is the issue, there is one on, right off I five and the Portway.
Yep, has a wonderful shooting range.
Yeah, I, I stopped in there and looked at that, uh, a couple of years ago, and I was pretty impressed with it.
I'm trying to remember the name, uh, but we were able to, when I was, uh, there in the city of Deucemont. We were able to work out an agreement where my officers could go in there and shoot, uh, and. It's a wonderful facility, it, it's very clean, it, you don't smell the lead, uh, and my officers were able to go in there and shoot. Off hours or during hours, uh, they had the time, just to make sure they're proficient. But for us at that time, the only other facility was using Fort Lewis, and Fort Lewis took a lot of work to use their facilities. So, uh, but I, I would pattern it after that one, or up there's another one, up, up, up north in Seattle. Uh, that's another good shooting range, but ventilation's a big, it is, yeah.
Yeah, and there's one in the basement of a bar, you know. It's that friend of Scott's hoop or something, and him and I were supposed to go down there and check it out, but.
Yeah.
Never came good for Lewis.
Well, he couldn't go downstairs after you get upstairs.
No, or the other way around.
Yeah.
You know, privately owned.
That's going back to your vehicle version.
But this could be a, you know, shooting range could be a serious money bank.
Well, I, I keep on saying, you know, the, the sheriff's department, uh, Shelton's, uh, PD, the range they use. The DOC, uh, out of the prison, which is a nice range, and they treat us very well. But they would love to have an indoor range, uh, and just to do, uh. I would call it like shooting, where they're just using their pistols, not their, uh, rifle.
Sure.
But just to stay proficient, uh, you know, you have to pull that trigger, uh, and so. When you're out there, like, last time I qualified with the sheriff's department, there was three inches of snow. And you're out there trying to shoot with your glasses and your, uh, hearing aids and.
Right off the old belt for a highway.
Well, we have, we have the, down at, uh, the prison, uh, we use their range, and so. But it would be nice to have an indoor range that we could say, hey, City of Shelton, uh, Sheriff's Department.
Well, I had talked to Casey about this when we first came over this idea, and he, he was all over wanting to.
Well, the only other part also is that they use is that the, uh, ground and watershed. Is that the state patrol, Reverend PD. Port Orchard, I think a lot of them use it, is at the watershed.
You know, Port Orchard has its own.
Yeah.
Out there at Port Orchard industrial park.
Just before the, the golf course, right?
Few, few parcels, it's a little over four acres.
Okay.
Two buildings, um, and then of course, you know where the power lines are. Part of it does go into the power lines, so we couldn't use some of that, but. Parking, huh, parking. Well, I think with VPA, I don't think you could, uh, cause there's criteria under power lines, you can't do anything with it. But, um, there's two parcels.
There's two what?
Two parcels.
Okay.
Both a little over two acres, so it might be something.
Okay.
And there's a lot of usable, cause it's, uh, it's got a huge parking area. Yeah, but if you, I don't know if you can see that or not. Let me see if I can make this a little bigger. Do you see the red line?
Yeah.
I would love to pursue it, yeah, we do, because it's standing for some of our ideas. That and, uh, an incubator for small business, yeah, I think four acres, cause plenty of area, it's already cleared, in most parts.
Just so credit where credit's due, this was Don's idea.
Yeah.
Thanks to Don, I, I, I had no clue what was going on with that piece of property up there, but.
Guys, you can look this up too, go to tax, Sifter Mason County, and I'll give you one of the parcel numbers.
Okay.
And you just type in the parcel number.
Okay.
You ready?
Yeah.
One, two, three, three, two, five, zero, 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 nine, zero, one, zero.
Yeah, thank you, that's on the others.
It's on. That Mason County, because that is the DIS, you know, uh.
Well, thank you, that's, that's a. That'd be wonderful if we could get that, if we. Pursue it at least.
Yeah, we something.
On the GIS thing there.
Yeah, when you go to that parcel number, go to View Map.
And I, I don't know if, we're doing a roundtable, so I, I hate to disregard formality, but I did talk to Jeff Carey. Uh, Jeff said. Uh, Jeff said he, I don't know if he talked to you, Larry, uh, they did say that he received some information on the water district and he would like to talk to us about that.
Okay, I talked to him yesterday.
Okay.
And we got, we got some stuff from ecology in response to our submission to them. So I talked to Tyson about it and said, you know, what, I don't understand what all this means. I mean, it's way over my head. And he said, well, it means they read the report and these are their comments on it, but half of the questions they're asking are answered in the report, it's like somebody didn't read it accurately. So he was gonna write me a synopsis of what it said and what they're asking us to do.
Well, I know Jeff will be signing on, he had an appointment this morning, uh, but he said he was gonna sign on and just, it, I, it's up to the other two commissioners if we could allow him a few minutes to explain where he's coming from and where he's doing, I, I'm still learning.
That would fall under our comprehensive plan because.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is in our comprehensive, so we do need to have some, and that's part of the criteria of what we are going to do, so.
Perfect, thank you. The problem about going to the grocery store.
Yeah.
Sometimes you go through each one of the parking lots and see whose vehicle's there and choose the other grocery store so you're not talking to people.
You're kidding, right?
No, I'm not.
Oh, wow.
And I'll tell you, as an ex-law enforcement officer, I used to wear the grummiest clothes so nobody would talk to me, and so.
You know.
I know it's being recorded, but that's my old trick.
When I was mayor, I got to the point, I wouldn't even eat dinner at a restaurant in Port Orchard.
Because you didn't get to.
Exactly. You know, I mean, it's the same thing.
Well, we were down, we, we heading down to Southern Oregon last weekend. My wife, uh, it was our anniversary and I said, you know what? And I said, alls I want is a sandwich for lunch, and I said, no, let's go ahead, something nice. And so we stopped by, uh, McMillan's down in Port Clam.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so we're sitting on the deck and I said, gosh, it's so nice just to sit out and watch the water and relax and all of a sudden I feel a tap on my shoulder. Hey, Jeff. I go, are you? And so luckily it didn't have to do with the port stuff, it had to do with my previous life, but, uh, Dana goes, is there really any place you can go where somebody doesn't know you? I said, no, Dana, we're sitting out here looking at the water, having a good time, but it was a nice lunch.
Yeah, that's a nice hotel.
It is, very nice.
We had a executive director seminar there when it first opened.
Hmm.
And, and it was, it was nice.
That's great. Um, let me see, keep this on task here, uh, we've talked about the indoor shooting range, we're gonna deal with that one. Um, any other comments on the commercial or light industrial part? I guess I kind of could try to use that if we get that too, right? We'll see.
I think those two would go together, if we could do it on the same parcel, yeah, that'd be great.
Of course, I just have the thing, the zoning, that could be an issue, you know. The shooting range, probably. Light industrial for businesses, I'm not sure.
That would be, that's good now though, isn't it?
Well, I'm not sure because it's really not in, it would be considered, I think, utility, so I think that has some kind of exemption.
Yeah.
I may be wrong, but.
No, you, you could be right.
Um.
But if it had the exemption, maybe the exemption goes with it.
No, it doesn't. Anytime you have a change of pace, ask me, I know.
Well, I think that's one of those, we need to talk to the commissioners before we.
Pursue, you know, yeah.
But we still look into that, get all the information.
Well, you know, one of the things I had thought about, and I think I mentioned it in the plan, was for doing the industrial part that put the shooting range in it, might have, you know, made a lot of sense.
Yeah, true. Well, pursue about the property first and then if it's feasible, then we can check about variance or, or a very, you know, variance for zoning or, or anything like that. There might be an idea, yeah. Uh, next would be the Salmon Center, you know, Sweetwater Park. Where are we with that? Anything?
Well, the, the cost of doing it has tripled in the time we've been pursuing it. And some of it has been because of the opposition to it, but not all of it.
Mm-hmm.
Some of it has been, you know, just inflation. Some of it has been, uh, aimed as to what's required, you know, to build it. And, you know, I have real mixed emotions about this, I mean, I know this would make Mr. Van Busker happy for me to say this, but I think, you know, if we were to abandon this, it would be the worst thing we could do.
Really?
Yeah.
For the reason?
I mean, you know, we've, okay, so we go through the grant process.
Mm-hmm.
We qualify for the grants, but they haven't funded the grants. You know, the legislature hasn't, as far down as we are ranked. And although we've qualified all three times, we haven't qualified. But they haven't funded the, the number of projects as far down as we are.
I saw that, you sent an email out.
And, you know, now we're up to a million and a half dollars when we started out at five hundred thousand. You know?
Have you talked to Mindy lately?
Not lately about it, you know, I wanted to see what you all thought before I really did talk to her.
Mm-hmm.
You know, something I thought about was doing something else with that property, I don't know what, but, you know. But that might be a spot for, for an industrial park, for industrial, you know, light industrial building, so I don't know. I don't think I would work there.
Uh, the Sparker piece, talking about piece of property.
Yeah.
Uh, you get, as soon as you get on the, you know, little parking lot there, you're uphill and then bouncing around.
We have all the wetlands, I mean, the whole point there was because of the pond.
I think good idea, and I would, I would entertain the idea because I'm not so quick to let that go. But still, nevertheless, I did the talk to the commissioners and see what their idea would be if we were to, uh, pull back on that, what, what they may want to do with that, with the possibility. Uh, would you go?
Make the county commissioners, mean?
Yeah, make the county commissioners if they're, if they have any ideas.
Yeah, I don't think they'd be involved, but.
Well, I'm saying the county in general.
Yeah.
I mean, you, because if we let it go, what are you talking about, going back to somebody buying it as a private piece of property or? That's what I'm saying, is to entertain the idea so that Mindy's, uh, plan or what she would like to see still happen isn't completely unhinged because of a decision we made.
Well, you know, if.
That's all.
If we were to, you know, transfer that money to the county and they were still willing to do the grant process with Mindy, that's between them and.
It is.
You know, them and we're, we're out of it.
We're, it is, but I, I wouldn't be so quick to say, oh, let's see what happens. Have, go at it. I'm, I'm curious, before I, as a commissioner, would be okay with that, what, uh, what the end game might be beyond that, that's all.
You know, the county might be willing to put some money into it as well, so the grant ads didn't have to be.
They don't have much in the North Mason to give them, now they don't.
So, I don't know.
That's why I'm, I'm, I'm talking like that.
I just don't, I just don't see us being able, you know, the port can't fund this project.
Right.
And.
It doesn't mean they have to die hard, it just means that we may not need to move it on to something else that could pursue it beyond what we're able to do.
Well, and I don't have any harbor about that, I'm just, you know.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the park, don't get me wrong. I see this one there.
And we do need, we need park, and I, I'll tell you where, where I really get problem about this is that we have, we have a piece of property where the old teriyaki place used to be there on State Route Three that's still to this day shats me, is that that was supposed to be a spot that Fish and Wildlife purchased that property.
Oh, right.
And that was supposed to be used for veterans to go down on Good Canal to waterbell hunt.
True, and they blocked.
And it's blocked out. And I get so.
Yeah.
So upset when I see that going, okay, this is a piece of property that, one, Mason County doesn't get taxed, revenue problem.
Yeah.
And it's not being accessed by the public unless you know exactly where it's at and you park your vehicle, hopefully it doesn't get side swiped or broken into, and you walk down there and go duck hunting. And, and people may say, well, I prefer to do that.
The homeless don't.
That's, that's where that property is supposed to be used. Now, for that Sweetwater Park, my concern is that if we were to abandon it, all right, we, we need green spaces in Mason. We really do. And, and we need public access to places where people can go relax. Would that property go back to the school district? Uh, or we have complete possession, where we say, okay, let's put a for sale sign up on, on the, on the stream then. Let's put a for sale sign up and we get rid of it. Uh, I know the school eventually wants to, uh, move the elementary school somewhere, but that's a long-term plan. But what do we do with that property to make the best use for our community? A park is wonderful, I have no problems with a park, I just wanna see it jump right. And I think all of you have heard, my biggest concern, who's gonna place it, who's gonna be the firefighters up there, who's gonna do that? So, you know, and when it comes to us owning port property, you call the sheriff's department? Oh, it's port property, oh, you got Travis, what, what?
He doesn't have any powers.
Exactly, Travis does a wonderful job, but with the limited stuff he can do, he does a wonderful job.
Mm-hmm.
But at the same time, it's like, okay, how about county, you take over? But at the same time, we have problems up at Sand Hill, we have problems, and that's county property. I can tell you, I've heard complaints about the sheriff's not getting up there, and the sheriff knows it, he's limited his depth. So anyway, my question is, does that property go back to the school district? If we were to forfeit it or?
You know, I don't know.
Well, and it was, part of it was bought by RCO, I mean, money's, so we are under a different congregation. Yeah, so I don't think we could really. I don't think we could really sell it, I don't know what we could do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I'd have to find out.
So if, if we were to.
I hadn't thought about it though. I wonder if the tribe, the Squaxon tribe, would be interested in partnering with the Salmon Center to develop it? They probably would be. And, and we would just give, give it to the, to the Squaxon tribe the same way that we got it.
True, and then nobody could say anything about it.
Yeah.
Oh, but again, RC, RCO, you know, again, it's, it's that and, and.
And I wonder if the tribal involvement.
Everybody wants to play.
Wouldn't get it rated higher in the grant process.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, I.
I would like to see the park, you know, I mean, I know one of the concerns was what Washdaw's gonna do with the culvert there.
Right.
But, you know, it's still, there's, there would be issues with that, so. No matter what they do.
I don't know.
Part might be a jam.
So on, on that issue, uh, I'm gonna forward this, uh, thorough, you had a wonderful presentation at PTO, PTO last week. And all the culvert repairs that are going on, I'll forward it to Larry and he'll forward it off to you.
Good.
It's wonderful information, I mean, it's great information about what we are doing with regards, regards to culvert replacement and what's happening. But, uh, thorough.
Was there, was there a list about what they were gonna do about the widening for Highway Three?
You know, we, I, I keep on, uh, I keep on asking.
Mm-hmm.
Belver, Belver, Gors, Belver, Gors.
Keep that in, that's what it takes. Yeah.
Do you, it's a, it's a curious question of what your thoughts are, have you ever seen the North Mason Belver incorporating? Or are we being at the limb of, of like, everything going from the south?
And I can tell you, uh, there's been a lot of discussions. There's been a lot of discussions about, but, you know, when it takes to, and I'm talking to one of the experts, what it takes in the expense to run a city, does Belver Allen.
Does it have it?
Yeah, does it have the money to incorporate and, uh?
Allen has everything to do with that.
Yeah, and, 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 yeah, what residents are getting a little.
So, and partly, the big part of that is, uh, what people wanna see happen, is it happening because it, it's at the limit of everything from the south end of the county and then handled by other people who are trying to drive a train, you know?
It really is, and, and you know what? And I could tell you from the last three years that I've funded in working here in Mason County or working in Mason County, I see that the south end drives it and I scratch my head and I go, why? Uh, that's, I don't read. You know, and, and a lot of the people in the south end, and you know, too, you and I sit on the same group. They don't go up to the north end, they don't have to deal with the traffic where it used to take me five minutes to run into the hardware store, now it takes me twenty-five or thirty minutes to run into the hardware store. And you're scratching your head going, okay, I know growth is going on, everything's fine, relaxed, but at the same time, it's like, no, this isn't acceptable. So if you wanna do growth, the first thing to do is develop a transportation plan to peo, get people out and get them moving. But then, you know, it, it, I, it's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I've heard the discussions and people are talking.
Okay.
I just don't, I just don't think there, there, there is enough money at Mason County, but does anybody wanna pay more?
Yeah, I think my question is distraction, but I'm curious.
No, I, I, I actually, I had that discussion the other day, so.
Okay, there was some discussion a few years ago about Allen incorporating that whole city.
Yeah, well, they've been talking about that for fifteen, twenty years then, because they have all the, they have everything they need to do that. But again, who wants to drive it and, you know, it'd be pretty murderous to do that, but they, they could qualify.
Yeah, they could, and as long as the police station, uh, was at the ice cream shop, I'd be happy.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, it's a donut shop now, it'd be ideal.
Well, yeah, yeah. Donuts and ice cream.
Okay, the next item.
Jeff has signed on, I don't know if he wants to sit through all of this or did he wanna?
Uh, well, I'll tell you what, let's, because the water is on our comprehensive plan, so maybe we should open it up for Jeff to address it, the water situation. So Jeff, would you like to ask questions or comment about our water situation? Because that is in our comprehensive plan. You're still muted.
And it's on your agenda.
You're still muted.
And.
There's not a comment specific to the water issue that, or?
It's still muted, do you have to unmute him, Larry?
Yeah, I, no, I, but I can ask him to unmute. Need to unmute.
Unmute, yeah.
Okay, how about now?
Yeah. Now we can hear you. Can you hear me now?
Yep. Apologize, we're, we're, hello, from both of us. Um, comments on the water system. Um, obviously, you know, we're trying to make this happen, obviously I know that we're, uh, hung up in the red tape with ecology. Um, it, it's, you know, it's kinda like pushing a noodle with your nose, you can't move it until other things happen. Um. The, my only, my only frustration is, is that, uh, none of us can wiggle until something happens and we're, we're all blocked up, I can't sell property, I mean, I can sell property, but then it can't be developed because there's no water. Um, I, I've gone through the port's plan, the water system plan they approved back in two thousand eighteen. So I'm, I'm up to speed on, uh, you know, it's at least that moment in time, up to speed on, um, what, what the port needs for water and what have you. Um, obviously, I'm a little nervous when I, when I look at different word patterns from ecology and from engineering because I've been down that, I've been down that path with different engineers and, and ecology. And so those words had different me, at least meanings back then that weren't, weren't fun, so I'm hoping that, that, um, Tyson can get through that, but I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is I know how to get this water system going in such a way that it serves all three zones. You have this zone between, that's below one forty feet, you have the zone that I'm in, and then you have this zone above roughly one eighty feet in elevation. And the designs that the, the engineer created for your booster pump is, is way, is way overkill. And it, it didn't take in consideration the regs, when I say regs, the county development regs. Because if you go through it, it looks like you don't need half the boosting he's talking about, and there's a, so I came up with a whole different approach. Uh, but the way I, the way I read your, your plans and what have you, really both wells should be, you know, coexisting. Uh, because there's no way my well can do the whole thing, there's no way your well, like current well, can do the whole thing. And there's, it appears that in budgets, there's not enough money to get at this point in time to get another well in and get, you know, sanitary setbacks and all this kinda thing done in time for your grants, your loans, what have you, your upper money and what have you. So it seems like everybody wants to get the thing done, but we're not getting it done. And, um, I, I think I mentioned before that. I, I think I mentioned before that reviewing the plan, your plan, one, one issue is, is that when they calculated, they did something, this is technical, but with the peak hour, that's really messing up the capacity of what the port can serve. And it's like twice what my, my capacity. And I would, for every gallon I pump out, I can serve twice as many, so to speak, per gallon than, than the port can, which is not right. And, and I, I see where the calculation came in, but nobody came back and reviewed it. And because of how the port's water system pumps, again, this is nitty gritty detail, you, you, you drain off the pump and then, or off the tank, and then when it gets to a point, then you pump it back up. The, the problem is that doesn't give the port any data to tell what the peak hour demand is on any given day. Uh, so, so you don't have any data. On mine, because I just have bladder tanks, I get updates every 15 minutes. I can use the PUD's records and determine what my peak hour. And my peak hours are coming in even lower than our engineer engineered it for, which me, which is great because that means you've got more capacity to serve more users. Um, so, uh, we just, at, at some point, uh, you know, we need to get this finalized. I mean, I have, I have a retainer already set for the attorney to get the contract, but I don't know what we're, you know, we don't have a memorandum of agreement yet. And I, and I realize there's no way at this point you can because we got to know whether you can pump, you know, from my location or not, but um, we got to figure out something here because this is, we're going around in circles and it's, and, you know, it's, it needs to be in front and center on the port's comp plan because, or the harbor improvements because it's one of the areas you're spending the most money and also going to bring in the most money over time. And, and it has the biggest impact to development in the plat, the plat portion of Allen. Uh, to get that straightened out. And, um, again, I'll say conservatively, going through the numbers, technically, between your well and our well, we should be able to service the whole third of the UGA as it sits right now. You don't need the big booster. That's, that's another issue. Because people, in effect, through numbers on the wall and that became the rule, I think that's creating some problems because like ecology's hung up, I can see like with this instant demand, which was one of the numbers that the engineers back in 2008 or '09 put in to the port's plan. And the problem is, there's not the need to pump 555 gallons instantaneous demand. But because it's in there, that's what we got to test for. Because we got to test, then we got to put those size of pumps. And because of that size of pump, you can't, you cannot get that much out of your well or my well instantaneously. In the case of mine, through engineering, we can probably pull, you know, easily 300, you know, we don't have to test, we only have to test 125 gallons per minute uh, for 24 hours. But it looks like to me that based upon the recharge and all the data we have to date, that we could pull 300 gallons a minute out of mine, 10 hours, stop two hours, let it recharge, and then do another 10. And so basically 10 on, 2 off, 10 on, 2 off, over a 24-hour period. Where that puts you is literally with the development, how it's occurring on this hill, you know, this east side of, of, um, Allen, uh, we, between the port's well and this well, we could pretty much service the damn UGA as it, as it's developed to this point. If it expands the boundaries, then it's a different story. But in current boundaries, current development, current regs, we have capacity. So I know that's a lot of words, a lot of, you know, talking about different points uh, as far as technical side, but we need to create something to move this, you know, the, the other, we just need to figure out something, how to move this thing forward. And it seems like we're just sitting, waiting, waiting and, and, and I'm not blaming Larry or anybody for that, but, but the, the real problem is that the engineers didn't do a good feasibility study when they first proposed the plan for the booster.
So Jeff, is there a way, is there a way that we as the port and our people that are working with us and you and refute what they are saying, or would that just put another link in the, you know, let it slow it down?
That's what Tyson is doing.
Okay.
You know, I, I spoke with him, Jeff, I didn't get to talk to you, but I spoke with him yesterday.
Right.
What he said is a lot of the questions that they asked are addressed in what we sent them. And so he's writing a synopsis to address all of it. And I should have a copy of it hopefully tomorrow. But if not by Monday, and I will forward that to you when I get it. But he said, this thing shouldn't, you know, have a problem when it's all said and done.
Right.
I asked him, you know, our goal at this point is to try to get this done before the end of the year. Is that doable? And he said, absolutely.
Okay, well, we'll keep working with the port on that to make that happen. Obviously, to some degree, we have to figure out where I, the only thing that's concerning to me is all the steps are serial in nature, meaning we, you and I can't work on kind of the structure of an agreement, so I can get my attorney kind of going ahead of time, so that we're not, I'd like to try to do some things in parallel so that we're not all serially stepped, because I'm afraid we're going to go past that, that window, one, which is not the end of the world, but that's one concern. The other is, you know, the reason I'm kind of complaining about how, you know, it's taking forever, again, not with most recent things, but it's because had in the beginning, engineers said, hey, we can't get the sanitary setback or talked to, you know, I had mentioned to you, Larry, that they're going to have to do a $50,000 improvement before they could even start to pump, you know, for even the tests. Um, you know, we, we could have approached this problem totally differently because we, you know, we've, we, we, you know, from everything, from selling the distribution, to leasing our well, to terminating the well, to buying our well, you know, we've, we basically worked all the different options. And really, the reason we're working all these is because my feeling is that engineering did not give you a proper, you know, summary of saying, you know, feasibility, saying, okay, we can go this way, this way, or this way. Um, you know, so I don't want to sound like I'm complaining, although I guess I am, but it's like we got to we, I'm just hoping that we can work this thing through because we're all kind of sitting and I'm concerned with the different word patterns mentioned by ecology that, you know, this thing could get dragged out longer yet. And I, I realize there's not much we can do about it, but it's like, um, it's like, if we need, if there's something we should be addressing because we're going to come down to that point, like with the Department of Health, we should get on it and get it done. Because Department of Health takes 90 days for many of their reviews. And we don't need to add a 90 here or 90 there type thing, so. But I hear, I hear what you're saying, Larry, and all I can do is wait, um, and, and both of us can wait and see what comes about.
Well, how about if you do this? How about if, uh, I get, I'll call Tyson tomorrow, or maybe this afternoon. See if we can't set up a Zoom meeting with you and him and me. And you can ask him your questions directly, rather than have, have him get lost in translation.
Yeah, I definitely would not want to try to ask you to ask him a question because we're getting into.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But let's, go ahead and, and I'll set up something for the three of us. And, you know, that way, I hope, what I hear you, from you is frustration and impatience with the process, which I totally understand because I share your frustration and your impatience. I want this off my plate. And, you know, and, and right now, it's at the top of the plate. So, so how about that meeting up and let's go from there?
Right, okay, just keep me in the loop. You know, what I'm really also saying is, you know, the port's losing out on money, I'm losing out on money, and all because, you know, and we, and, and the weird part is we all have capacity to do things.
No, like I said, I, I share your frustration. I mean, you know, and I know this will work. We just need to convince bureaucrats and Olympia that it's going to work, and that's the problem at this point.
Right. The, the, the one other thing, and I'll mention to the board and to you, Larry, both is both, uh, both entities, is that the, the plan that I created for the booster, and I'll call it the booster, you know, you can call it Kerry's Booster System, I don't care, whatever you want to call it. But the booster system I worked out to drive all three zones, it has to, it is significantly different than what the booster system that, um, Brian got approved by Department of Health. And I'm just, I'm concerned that we'll get all the way through, get everything wrapped up, know how to do, but still be stuck with another approval where we can't go forward. And I'm just concerned.
We need to have Brian at that meeting as well.
Yeah. Be, be, you know, and I know your concerns with Northwest Water, and I have those same concerns and but I, I mean, and I know how engineers can be. If somebody out of the blue creates a new plan, sometimes feathers get ruffled along the way, and I'm not trying to do that. I'm really trying to, trying to make this thing work. I believe I got the things covered engineering-wise, but I'm not an engineer, and so it has to go through them. And, and like I said, it's significantly different than what Ryan set up with Department of Health, and I, my feeling is, you know, that we really should get on that be, because even if we instigate this, nobody can, as I was voicing to you the other day, even if we say yes, 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 all the way through, I have this instantaneous problem where if I put this booster in, and once I flip the switch, I can't go back. And, and so there's things I need to test. It's like I need to be able to buy water from the port moment, you know, for a period of time while we go through the, you know, this isn't like, this is purely custom, the whole design, and, and it's all stock items, but it's like five weeks to get all the boosters in and all the equipment in, and then there's, you know, uh, uh, three, four days of installing it. And then there's like, once we, so to speak, go primetime, I can't go backwards.
Well, there's got to be a way to reconcile your plan and their plan. There has to be. I mean, because you're boots on the ground and you're going to make, you know, you're going to make it work and you know about the regs, about any backflows or anything like that. So surely they could say yes, rather than, well, maybe, you know? So is that something you could, I think he's working on trying to get some information together right now. To get you, to get some kind of conference going on.
So would that be, would that be a healthy direction with Larry, yourself, and Tyson and Ryan? Uh, to have, to meet, to meet on this matter?
I, I, I think initially, it's probably Larry, myself, and Tyson. Then once all three of us are all on the same page, then bring Ryan in. If, if Larry's, I, I share Larry's uh, concerns with the engineering side from Northwest Water, so whatever you think works there, there, I'll use, I'll defer to your judgment, but, but I don't think you want to bring him instantly in until we got our ducks in order on the, on the water rights side of the equation. And then when, because, because then we're going to get in the issue where Tyson doesn't know what, when I started talking some of the factors to Tyson, he was aware, but it isn't his area. You know what I'm saying?
And that's why I wanted to have Ryan in on the meeting, because it's his.
Yeah, but, but I, I think there's kind of a two stepper. I could, I'll defer to your judgment on it, but I'm concerned there's like two steps to it, that you may have to take two steps to make it happen.
All right, I'm sending an email as we're talking here. Uh, saying you've expressed some concern to the Port Commissioners about getting this process done and closed. I suggest that we can have a Zoom meeting on Monday, so we can ask you some technical questions that I can't answer.
Right, right.
It works for you.
That, that's fine. And, and, and Larry and the Commission both, I just, I, I don't, I don't want, this is another one of those steps that can go serial on us, meaning instead of all happening at once and being done, you know, and signed over. If, if we knew that engineering could get this through and this would be approved by Department of Health, at least Larry and I could start working on that portion of the agreement and, one, come up with that number to that component and get agreement. And then once we have that, then move to create, start creating the agreement, so we're not sitting waiting until, you know, till everything's done with, you know, one agency or the other.
Well, the one thing, we're going to have to have a purchase and sale agreement in place if we're going to apply the Department of Health money. Because that's, that's the only thing that held this up last time.
I know.
Last year's. I always get, we skip the memorandum of understanding, go right to the purchase and sale agreement.
Okay, then, but then that means we kind of got to get this thing nailed down on how we're going to approach the booster.
Yeah, we do.
And, and I, I can, I can, I can make the statements. I know what to do personally right this second, but I'm not an engineer. I don't have the degree, and I don't have the approval with the Department of Health to just go do it.
Okay. All right, well, I've, I've already sent the email to Tyson asking for the meeting, so let's see what we get back, and I'll be in touch with you.
Okay. And then if you don't, if you don't mind, I will just, um, all, all I would say imparting is be sure that in your comprehensive plan of harbor improvements, that you have the water system in there.
Oh, we do.
It's in there.
It's at the top.
Okay. Is that, that's, we're allowed time for all, everybody, not just me, but you and other parties, and it, and, and it's economically a very important thing to the tax base and the development, at least to the eastern third of the UGA.
Now, it, it's job one for this plan.
Okay. Well, if you don't mind, I'm, I'm sitting in a car in the sun baking, because I thought the meeting was going to be at the port building and, uh, so if.
Are you whining?
I'm sorry?
Are you whining?
Oh, yeah. I need, I need, I need an outlet.
Well, I guess we're in.
Yes, today, today, but, but is that, is that good enough of the pushing agenda? But we, you know, there, I feel there are things we should, you know, once, once we'll know when we talk to engineering as far as Ryan goes. Uh, but my gut feel is that we should, we should be on a stick and getting that done with the Department of Health, so that we don't have any hiccups on the transfer over.
No, I don't want any either. I want this off my plate.
Me too.
Yeah.
Hey, Jeff, one quick question. How many more houses? I saw that there are some lots cleared. I haven't been around town for a while, but additional lots cleared. Uh, do you know how many houses are going in? I, I was trying to count when I was driving up the road. I can't remember. But.
Well, I know a couple of different things, okay? One, there, you know, because I got my finger in all the different pies because of the road maintenance and what have you. I know that Sealand Homes is trying to, uh, build 20 more homes on two blocks. Um, I do know that they're hung up in red tape, uh, with the county. But I also know, as Larry knows too, that there are some financial opportunities, and when I say opportunities, challenges is a better word, uh, with Sealand Homes, and I don't know how quickly they're going to pull that thing. I have talked to the county because I've asked the question, okay, I maintain these ditches. What are we doing? Now, what, what are you waiting for? And they say they have talked to Joe about, uh, two or three different components to a SEPA, one being traffic, another being, um, the sewer which he has, and the other being stormwater, which is a complicated issue when it comes to the plat of Allen. My concern is that I don't see any action going there and things could get hung up. I have another developer that's asked, um, a third party which you know from selling or for hooking up called Red Door. Red Door's expressed an interest in buying, um, at least 10 lots of ours, right, of our families right now. I've asked the question because I'm trying to figure out a way to get Sealand Homes moving. If, if they're really financially hung up, how to get them unstuck? Because Red Door would pick up another 10 lots of theirs easily. Technically speaking, once the SEPA is done, then there's only needs to be amendments, and there's in position right now, um, 10. Um, 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, roughly 60 more lots that could just start anytime.
There goes the helicopter pad.
Yes. Yeah.
And you brought something up, Jeff. Maybe you could tell me the stormwater. Somebody asked me the other day, where's our stormwater retention bonds? In, uh, this, uh, in Allen?
They're, they're twofold. It, it, because Allen is an 1889 plat and I'll try not to make a long story out of this. But because it's an old plat, every owner has the right to develop it within a, you know, a single, whatever zoning allows. Because nobody owns the whole plat, nobody could technically put a stormwater retention. So when Seerland Homes started, I said, one thing to do to help the whole program is put dry wells under the drywa- driveways, which they have been doing except in a couple low, you know, low areas where it doesn't make sense. You're not gonna help the problem by holding water in a low area. And, and so all the houses except for maybe five have dry wells in them where when it, they can handle up to an inch a day of rain. That, that greatly slows down what the, you know, the, uh, stormwater issue, you know, impact is. Where it is right now, we, we have a swell that's not a detention or retention. It's, it's more of a, um, uh, slow, slow the water down, try to knock the set, any sediment out before it's released to the bay. And that's down on the, uh, just north of their current development. But that, that has not been finished and that has to be approved. And, you know, this Seerland Homes has the plan that's on their property. They're supposed to have it approved. It, it, it serves the function, but it's not finished. So, and, and technically we, upstream, we have another stormwater detention area up on Blackwell Street. But again, that's more of a settling. It's not, it can, it can no way hold the whole upper part of the hill. It more or less slows it down, strains out any sediment before, you know, as, as much as possible and then releases from that point. You know, I've, I've covered this with Seerland Homes. I've covered it with Red Door to let them know that, you know, you gotta bite the bullet. The, the problem is I just don't know where Red, uh, Seerland Homes is in the functions of things because, um, I've tried to help them out, but you know, I like the porter on the hook from Seerland Homes on a, a number of things and we, you know, there hasn't been progress on it. So, uh, I know that's not really answering your question, uh, Ted, but.
It is. Thank you.
Yeah, but it is, it is being slowed down by swell. Eventually that swell will be fenced in. Um, we can handle on this hill an inch an hour. When the ground's all saturated, we can have, handle an inch an hour. To give you a, a feel, all last year, the heaviest rain we ever had last, all last year, all last winter was roughly worked out to about, um, between a quarter and a third of an inch an hour. And the previous year we had about four tenths of an inch an hour is that peak. So obviously if you have like the 2007, eight storm that we had where we had the ice, the snow and all that crap all at once, it's all gonna, there's no, there's nothing in the world you can build big enough to hold it. But, uh, but all, as we calls, we can handle 363 days for sure, per year.
Well, thank you, Jeff. I'm sorry to get off tangent, but I appreciate the information.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anything else?
Yeah, I agree.
What'd you say, Jeff?
No, I was saying, uh, uh, anything else? I'm cooking, I'm cooking in the car.
Yeah, you addressed appropriately the, the water issue and, um, and answered the question really nicely. We're gonna break for lunch, right?
I think we're gonna break for lunch.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, one last thing, if I could address the commission, uh, I, I know I've told Larry this. I'm sure it's gotten conveyed. We're not hung up as far as having to have this whole thing paid off right away or any number of things. We're willing to work terms. Uh, we just, if, if we can just get this thing to move one way or the other, it'll allow developers to do things, even if Seerland Homes can't develop, Red Door can develop. And those are all connection things. And I mean, there's, you know, there's, there's six connections waiting to go to the port. And we can't do anything about it. I mean, there's 36,000 bucks there for the port, right? As it sits, but we're not there yet. So.
We understand.
No, that's a, that's, that's, that's a nice, a nice feedback from you, you know, that, uh, even willing to work terms, just get something going here.
Right.
Whatever it looks like.
Right. I mean, to be five, it's gonna be over five years. It can be over 10 years. I'm, the, the biggest thing is to get this moving because then it allows us to do things. I have things to do with my dad's estate. It's blocked because, yeah, you can sell the lots, but then you don't have water. So, you know, those, all those kinds of issues. And then I have people in the will and then I say, well, why are you getting only this much? When you can get this much? And I said, because there's no water. So there's a lot of things tied to this thing that would really make my, our lives, uh, to start with Larry's and my life a lot simpler.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're gonna break for lunch. Um, we go about doing that. Do we just put a pause on stuff or?
I can order and just run and pick it up. I can order online. See if I can actually continue.
Okay.
Just need to know. We were gonna go get pizza and a salad.
Sure.
Pepperoni and cheese.
I'm good. I'm easy. Whenever you get one. That sounds great. And then if we do this, then, then we have a time that, let's figure out a time that we're gonna open up because we can break and write into the connection session.
Yeah, cause that's at one.
Whatever that looks like.
Okay. Well, let's keep going and maybe, uh, take a 15 minute break at 12:40 or something like that, or does that sound good? Maybe a 20 minute break? Cause it's, uh, 12:11 right now.
Yeah, and I'm just running over to Flippies. It's about two blocks down.
Okay.
Thanks for that.
Yeah. Of course, I guess we could eat during, uh, executive session too, but. Excuse me.
Do you mind if we just take a 10 minute break or a five minute break?
Let's do that.
Thank you.
Take a few minute break. Thank you very much, everybody.
No hook and no.
Hey, Leah.
Yeah.
Uh, I am not gonna be able to make the Campbell's meeting.
Okay.
And I saw you sign me up. I apologize.
No, that's fine. I always sign everybody up just in case.
Yeah, I'll send you, I'll send you the mail. I will be, I am excited to go to the ecology and get into coma.
Probably.
From there.
And then.
Baron Day, I'll get Chad, I'll tell them whatever, but wow, anyway.
Whoever else is in there.
Do have a.
What happened?
Yeah, his appendix, uh, gentleman that I'm with, his appendix ruptured. Good guy, really. That's the first time in twenty-five years he's not gonna be able to go. Did you know, um, Randy Endicott?
Yeah.
He just got it. He was very, like, kid, very hope he was, but. Somebody sent him an email when he passed away. Yeah, 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 cancer, let them know.
We're expecting my wife's gonna have to go to Florida any day now, her sister.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she ripped all the feeding tubes out. And postures that just said it's a matter of time. We want to go. We got full-blown Alzheimer's. I mean, it was, when I was there, it was sad. You know, her husband is just beside it, so doesn't know what to do.
Got you a little bit more care.
I mean, he's over there every day and trying to take care of.
Uh, kids app. Uh, hey, Ken, uh, kids app builders club in, uh, association, association in Roberta next to the state patrol.
Okay. Thank you. I just didn't see it on the agenda and was curious. Thanks.
You bet.
Had the address.
And when I called you, did we post it? Did we put it over by here a thousand times? And I even told Dana where I'm going. She went, you remember where it says, thanks for the, uh, Henry place. And so I ended up at the cemetery and I'm going, you missed it. And that's when I called you.
Well, Sunday we're off and meet there anyway. But did we post it with the KBA? Did we post it that we made KBA?
Did we?
Yeah.
Did we post it that we had KBA?
Kids app posted the address.
Okay.
Oh.
That, that worked.
Okay. And we're members, so we get to use this.
Yeah. So we're actually exercising the privilege. All right.
That's part down here that we, um. Three water park.
Hey, we could make a. Big water park, a skateboard park.
Yeah. We can buy that idea.
I don't got all that, um, skateboard park, I don't want to bring anybody at all.
No, there are a lot of makers.
You know, I was involved in one of South City town. One of that South City Park.
We know where it is.
And, I mean, yeah, first class was something.
I think one of the driving, I hope we get a good response from the survey, you know?
Yeah.
Cause we want to deal with what our community wants driving there.
Yeah.
And we're obviously engaged, a couple few projects of trying to filter through, but that being said, I'm super into it.
Well, I'll have to post it on Facebook, post it on the website.
I should.
It on the web. And then what I'll do is I'll go ahead and, um, send it to like the Chamber of Commerce and, you know, the EDC and everybody, have them distribute it as well.
Would you, is there a big reading of the Shelton Journal in the North Mason area for big numbers? I read it. Uh, I, I don't know if it's that big, who subscribes to it or who does it online, but I read it.
Yeah, and, you know, we want, we want the responses to come from within the jurisdiction.
I know, that's what I was wondering.
That's true.
But I, I do agree with that. You know, if there's a day that, I do like that idea of this day that we can, you know, talk to people at the grocery stores, they have ordered Starbucks or something. I'd like to do that, but Starbucks gets such a mixed, uh, the main Starbucks gets such a mixed.
Yeah.
Group of people that are not local residents.
Right.
But UFC is a great way. Have, uh, a good group of people. Would you like to make a day of that? I mean, I'd be game. A lot of people are admission group, you know?
Yeah.
I think it'd be great.
Got it.
Yeah, now let's, can we make a plan and do that? I mean, I mean, open it. Either may want to pick a, maybe a Saturday morning. Yeah. Or, or, well, let's see, why do people do their grocery shop? I don't grocery shop. I have no idea.
Sure, you collect in the morning.
Yeah. Get in there, get out. Well, uh, if we were to do it in September, where we get a lot of the folks that are here visiting out of the community and we start getting our local community back into the grocery store. I'm just thinking, what day would be the best day? Maybe during the middle of the week?
Yeah, true. Like a Wednesday or something.
Yeah, Wednesday would be good. Uh. I'm thinking like at UFC, uh, there's a number of gentlemen from Lakeland that beat up.
And what about Safeway?
Yeah, Safeway would be another one. I mean, I'm, I'm talking both weeks. Maybe spend a couple hours at UFC then go over to Safeway.
Mm-hmm.
And, but the three commissioners just go out there and just talk to people. We could just run out at the exit.
Yeah.
And just say, hey, what do you want to see for this community? Are you, look, are you a member, are you our resident here? What do you want to see from reported value? And so. And we just noticed there's an outreach meet to the community. That's a symbol.
Yeah, no decisions or anything.
No. We need to talk to them. We want to get feedback right then they're on the spot and or hand these out, or maybe some people take the time to figure a lot, because I'm the lookout, so.
No, we'll finalize these this week and.
You what?
Once we get done with this and know what we want.
Yeah.
Finalize this this week.
Okay. But I do agree that our number one project is order, not to loop. Yeah, and listen to John talk about the development. I, I was coming home, I was just like, what the heck? There's more laws being cleared. And I mean, you never, I mean, we have a duty, I mean, you're working on a part. I know if anybody's frustrated, it's, that was you and John. But, um, I'm glad to see that that happened with, uh, that part of the agenda where he got out there and said, I was really helpful for me. I mean, to just kind of connect some of the dots. If you guys are frustrated, but even though we're trying, I'm trying to pay attention to what's going on. And that was super helpful, so, um, yeah, it's a revenue thing. I mean, soon as we get this thing figured out, we start getting revenue, we should, that, that's why we're invested in this, not just how the community, we get a return on it. Et cetera, et cetera, so.
Well, we've got to have this to our Theo by March first, you know, the final plan.
By March first?
Yeah. You, but you've got to go through the approval process for the plan prior to that. You know, we, we have to update this plan every six years. Now, we've done updates, but, uh, that just basically keeps our Theo in the loop for what we're thinking, but our, you know, hard drop dead deadline is March first, twenty twenty-four.
But it can happen before that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Goodness.
And that's why I wanted to start this early.
Yeah.
So we, we got it done early.
I would.
Because last time we just barely made that deadline.
I think it's so, I mean, not that you aren't already, Larry, but yeah, just, I drive that train just.
Because, you know, the next thing that we, the next big project that we have is budget.
Right. Yeah, wouldn't it be nice to make this work out sooner than later, so that our new budget has this in the budget?
Yeah.
So Larry, what can, what can I do or any of the commissioners do to help you out?
It's a good question.
You know, when you were mayor, you had.
And old staff.
Yeah, well, you had staff, but you had, you had city council members saying, do this, do that, I want this done, I want that done.
Yeah.
And I look at it as an executive director, I have my board telling me to do this, do that, and I look at what my staff can handle, what I can handle. And go, there's not enough hours on the day to get this done. So, but what can we do then? Help. Thank you for asking.
You know, there's not a lot really. What I need from you guys more than anything, when I call you or leave you a voicemail or send you a text message, is to get a response.
Sure.
In a timely manner. That's the most important thing. You know, I try not to bother you, you know, with petty stuff. But, you know, if I send you a text and say, call me. I only do that because you've not answered a voicemail at all, you know? Um, and if I can talk to you when I need to talk to you, that's the, the biggest thing you could do.
And, and with me, you know where I'm at, at my office, I have very little cell service. And the fork phone, I always have it on. You can call me all day and I appreciate you getting ahold of me, but I don't get cell service. And unless I step outside of the building, I get nothing.
And, and I understand that, you know, just.
And people have complained that I don't return their phone calls or, you know, and I said, I don't, I'm at the office nine hours a day. I don't get cell service in there unless I walk outside to my car and then it starts to chime in. But that's the nature of a metal building, I guess.
Well, what I try to do is keep you all in the loop about what's going on, which is why I send as many emails as likely. But.
Calling me is definitely the best way. Ninety-nine percent of the time to get something, respond to me. Even, I, I try to look at my email. I catch up with my email, you know, so. The phone call is a death. I mean, I don't, on a scale of one to ten, how much I respond to you? Be on a six, seven, eight. I'm curious, cause I, I try, I try to be that guy, but at the same time, I know sometimes I'm not.
Well, a lot of times when I can't get ahold of you, when I go home at night, I want to see if your truck is at your office.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's funny. Okay. So is anybody else?
Give you a number now, but okay.
Is anybody else going to the, uh, Walpa Conference in Tacoma? The, uh.
Environmental?
Environmental.
I wasn't planning.
I wouldn't be there.
I looked at the agenda and I got so excited that I asked Leanne to sign me out.
That's cool.
When is it?
Agenda for five months.
It was a lot to do with ports, uh, getting permits, getting all the stuff that we have to do to expand. And working through the SEPA and the Army Corps of Engineers. And I did see that, whatever that Keystone sent out.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about that for roundtable.
Yeah.
We'll talk about that for roundtable.
But it looked like a really good, uh, what is it? It's in September, late September. I won't be able to make the Shalane Conference, but I thought this one would, you know.
The plan is small port.
Oh, the Lake Shalane Conference works out good because the day before I'm.
Oh, yeah, you can go up on it.
Well, I go, well, last time I had to, anyway, I had to miss part of it, but I got to it and we got her here. This time, or whatever, it's, it, the lineup is so good from Dayton County to go to Lake Shalane, like, the day before we're done.
Yeah, they just have an inch Shalane, it's one inch Shalane because I guess the hotel where we've always had it's closed. And they're remodeling it or something.
The Campbell's?
No.
Oh.
That's one we had before.
Yeah, this one's gonna be at Campbell's. And.
But they're remodeling the.
The end zone.
Oh, wow. Okay, I like that, the way it was rustic and. Bavarian.
Haven't been to Campbell in years.
Haven't either. They haven't had anything there for at least ten years.
How hard time get Dee to go to any place like that? Cause she doesn't like to drive. She can't sit still long enough to drive three hours. Things are crazy.
So while we're waiting, uh, do we want to just keep on moving through?
Yeah, let's keep, keep going. I was just looking to see what about the, uh, environmental, I'm, I'm in the Washington Public Health Association, but usually they, boy, they sure changed the venue on this one. Can't find events.
Well, I've been talking to WPPA about the small ports, but now, stuff that applies to small ports. You know, one of the topics that I've suggested is how can a small port with a limited budget grow? You know?
Hmm.
How does, how does it find money for projects, that sort of thing?
Mm-hmm.
So I think they may actually put that on the agenda this time.
Well, yeah.
Because I was complaining about, you know, when you go to small ports, a lot of times the information isn't really geared. For smaller ports is geared towards medium size more than, you know, like all the stuff from the state auditor.
Right.
You know, a lot of that stuff doesn't apply to us and ports smaller than ours.
Yeah, so the only.
But it takes up a huge amount of time.
It does. So they break in, like, when they'll have, um, like they've done before, I don't know, I haven't looked at it, but what's helpful, sorry. What's helpful is when, uh, they, they have breaker, smaller group reports that can make decisions about what's best fitting for them for that hour or two, you know? Cause they're trying to, they're preaching, they're talking to that large audience and trying to put it.
Well, I like the roundtable groups, but the part, problem with those, who's been the facilitators, you know? They're supposed to teach you something and instead they're just trying to indoctrinate you. You know, like that guy with the electric. Yeah. EV charging station things.
Some of them are good. Some of, I, I have a hard time just because of the venue of it, it's really hard to hear.
Yeah.
It's usually big rooms and.
You're in a huge room with all those big things with everybody in it.
Which one? Yeah, I try to, my hearing's a bit bad, I gotta get close to it and I can't. Did you find it?
Oh, yes, I did. Yeah. Did you want me to go over some of that? Cause some of it, um, about the agenda, I went, I looked at the agenda.
Okay. No, it, it just, it'd be curious to go. I, I'm glad they're putting it on.
Yeah.
It's something that interests me, yeah.
That's good. Well, I'm glad that you're going with Thunderbolt. Well, let's point out, move on then. I think we're okay to move on. We've got, uh.
We're doing the bit for your, the, um. But it's being recorded, so.
Yeah, it's being recorded. We could be good. So now we're on number six, which is construct a restaurant lounge building at the North Shore Marina to be leased. I like it's that being very difficult.
Yes.
And very expensive and being that I ran.
I don't think it's gonna be that expensive and I think there's probably grant money for that.
Well, purchasing that little building next door to it, right? Or no?
No. No, we own all that land there.
Well, behind it, I mean, on the other side.
Yeah. You were talking about purchasing the one next to the marina.
Yes.
I don't see any reason to do that.
Okay. So what were you talking about then?
About the where the park lot is.
Okay, right.
Building a building there, you know, a metal building with a nice front on it. That could, could be big enough to be a restaurant and bar. And then take that property next to it and clear it, it's pretty much clear, but level it. And then, you know, we'll have to put in a commercial side septic system. Um, cause there's no sewers there. But we could lease it to a restaurateur, experienced restaurateur. And, you know, have someplace like Harold's used to be.
Harold's was.
You know, and we would make our money on the rent and a percentage of the revenue they generate. But when you think about it, there's no restaurant between builder and to do yet.
They used to have one out there with that pier that went out there.
That was Harold's.
Harold.
Harold, yeah, Chris and I used to go there years ago. Now there's nothing there.
You know, and it would bring voters in to the marina.
Yeah, that's for sure.
You know? And I think if we just put up the building, we'd be up to whoever we lease it to to finish the other stuff. And in a worst case scenario, you know, we'd get a loan from the bank to build the building.
Well. We can give it a try.
You know, finding a restaurateur probably wouldn't be that hard. You know, I know the guy that owns HD's was real interested in it when we talked about the plan time.
He's selling it though, you know?
Yeah.
Well, I, I was told he has a terrible cancer.
Oh, are you kidding?
No.
Oh, boy.
You know, I don't know if that's true. I mean, I don't.
Yeah.
Go there, but I had somebody tell me that.
Okay. Well, we keep that one on our list of things I would want to do. I think it's saved at the bottom for now, um. You know, the kite, sorry, I'm getting ahead of this, so I'm waiting for you. Uh, anyway, yeah, I read a book that you were.
Well, okay, so we'll keep that on, on the books. Okay. Um, next would be the competitive level skateboard park somewhere in Bel Air.
I'm interested in that.
I know our children need activity. They really do.
Yeah.
There's not much in North Mason to.
Nothing, nothing.
Nothing, you know, I, I, anyway. I would love to see our kids have opportunities to do things, but where, where will we put it? I mean, if you're gonna, if you're at that age, I'm thinking ten or, excuse me, younger than sixteen. You have to ride your bike somewhere to get to it. I look at the state's, uh, skateboard park at Shelton. And kids can get off walls, nail and, and ride their bikes that are safely through sidewalks and everything.
Mm-hmm.
Where do our kids ride their bikes from?
Yeah, true.
Uh.
Beards Cove or what?
Yeah, Refue, uh, Refue has safe roads if you want to ride and run down there, but from Allen to Bel Air, there's really no safe place to ride a bike.
Where the kids live.
Yeah, they live Allen.
Beards Cove.
Beards Cove.
Yeah.
Uh. So I, I look at this going, okay, it'd be great to have, but how do you get kids there? So, kind of the biggest part of our five-year plan.
And maybe if we get that destination combination sports complex, that might be a good place for a small.
You know, Mason Transit does a wonderful job and, and they're opening up, trying to expand their bus routes with the staff they have. And to be honest with you, if I were to grab, uh, jump on a bus and be safe and get transported there, I'd be happy. Uh, so that may be something we could do, uh.
You know, one time the county wanted to give us a little hunter park.
Yeah.
That might be a good spot.
Pretty little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has to be a deep, deep skateboard park, uh, and that, that place gets flooded.
It does. Yeah, so I don't know if that'd be good or not, you know?
It, uh. I said, I, I know the passion in our community to get activities for our kids. I think that's something we're gonna have to do.
Well, you know, we looked at Beards Cove when this first came up a couple of years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to find a spot in Beards Cove for it. And they have a little park there, but we require a lot of dirt work because parks on about three different levels. And. But, you know.
Go ahead and look.
And we had people from the Beards Cove Owners Association with us. And they didn't really have any other suggestions without where it might be a good spot. And that was their go-to place. But it's, it's not big enough and the configuration of the land is gonna be, you know, real.
And that's good for Beards Cove maybe, but then we're, we're trying to consider, uh, uh, the North Mason area for having a place for the kids to go. And it goes back to the same problem, but there's no safe way to get there unless they get driven there by the terrorists. And, and you're exactly right. I, I mean, that highway in particular here.
Yeah.
Really dangerous. It's, it's getting worse and worse, so.
So you said you were on the park, the skateboard park, and so what were the downfall? I mean, what were the negatives and positives on that?
The biggest, biggest roadblock to it was the county commissioner who didn't want anything in that park.
Oh, okay.
That was the biggest roadblock.
Okay.
I think the biggest.
But, uh, Leslie, Leslie Reynolds Taylor, who, uh, belongs to our Rotary Club there.
Mm-hmm.
She, uh, she was the person that spearheaded it. And it's a Tony Hawk designed park.
Oh, cool.
He's like the.
Yeah, I know who he is. Yeah.
He designed that park.
Really?
Yeah. Leslie, you know, single-handedly raised money for it.
How much did it cost?
Yes, upwards of a buck.
Wow, really? Of course, it's big.
Yeah.
Um, it's, gosh, I don't know how many feet, but it's like, uh, eighth of an acre or something like that.
It's huge.
Yeah.
It's huge.
Or a quarter of an acre or something. It's big, I know that.
You know, I mean, some of the money went to the design. The, the land was free because we got it from the county.
Hmm.
But, um. You know, doing the design and all, and building it, but.
Wow. A million.
Was it?
And that was back then.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
Gee.
I like to insert comment on that. So when we're looking at all these projects, I'm, I'm looking at it differently maybe, but, I mean, probably the same way, but anyway. Is balancing the return on the revenue? And, uh, and I don't mean just revenue for the port, but the combination of revenue for the port and then also you could, gotta get a return on stuff.
Economic development?
Yeah, economic development and what the community needs and wants, like that, that fit. You know, I don't think the skateboard park should be anywhere near. It should be at the very bottom right now. I like the idea.
And people either love or hate skateboards.
Well. I grew up dropping into twelve-foot balls, been on a skateboard, roller skate and everything else. I did.
I like the same.
That's why I'm hurt so much. But, and we didn't wear helmets. We didn't even wear shoes half the time. But, um, now it's all safety, safety, so.
See, we're all, we're all getting this visual of being on a skateboard.
Yeah, well, I hit a van that will cover forty-five miles an hour too much. That's how much skateboarding is, but I'm just saying, that's a cool factor with kids and everything. But it can't be anywhere near. We're kind of mixing it up. It needs to be at the bottom of our project. We're looking at a five-year project.
Yeah, I'm kind of with you on that one. I, I think that's a great idea too, but liability, cost.
Yeah.
Demand even. I don't see a whole lot of people trying to demand that either, so.
Who do you have?
Groups they came to last year.
Yeah.
Which is why this is on here.
Yeah, true.
But, you know, we haven't heard from them ever since we put it on here. That's the last I heard from them.
Mm-hmm. Mm hmm.
You know, the the biggest thing in our network was is just property.
Yeah.
It's it's scarce, but I will tell you, when my youngest daughter went to college. First thing on our list was the skateboard. She had to get back and forth to class.
Yeah.
And in Montana, the kids in the fall and spring were riding, everybody's riding skateboards to class.
And now they're riding electric scooters.
Yeah, now they're riding electric bikes and, uh, it's like pedal please once. Uh, but I know there's, I know there's need, but at the port, I I agree with both of you, is that it stays at the bottom. If it's, if we have a huge community swell of support, okay. Actually, I like that idea, what you threw into the mix, but okay, so I saw the soccer industrial complex in, you know, sports complex idea. Then we can maybe revisit that and see if that's fitting in the area, right? Cause that could be a competitive, uh.
Component too, that's true.
Component, yeah, where they bring in competition off the bikes, the trick bikes and everything else.
Yeah, cool. Yeah, that'd be great.
So I would keep that at the bottom of the list and then see if that somehow could be like fitting into that other idea.
Yeah, that's good.
And I wanted to stay focused on our mission, right? That's why I brought that other element to the revenue return and what the community wants.
Well, just to kind of recap some of this too, is that we're adding broadband into this. I don't know if that was in our original one.
It wasn't.
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't, but I think that's important.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it needs to be.
All of it.
Yeah.
To work on it. I don't know if we can ever get. And I I do need to call Port of Duval because they're an important mix and so Port of Duval's poor, but, uh. I think it's important for all ports to be thinking about broadband.
Yeah.
And we do have that nexus where we, as port districts, we can apply for these grants.
And what if we mix that up with the concept of a piece of property with a tower that would be involved with supporting them? As with getting grant money to again create another source of revenue.
You know, what I found was dealing with all these different entities, the P V's, a sound table, Comcast. It's a headache. Uh, one of the best companies I deal with is, uh, Hookin' Out Communications. Uh, they are just, they open the doors. They wanna talk. They wanna do things. They wanna.
And they're good at work.
They are really good, but I mean, you start dealing with these larger companies as you make a phone call. And say, hey, I need to know where the fiber lines are going from here to here, and you run into a stone, stone wall. So.
There you go.
As as a port commissioners and as as a port of Allen, we can take the lead. I know Port of Refue with Tom Farmer being on P V's work. Tom Farmer knows a lot about what's going on and he's been wonderful to work with. But, uh, I think we need to take, we can do it.
So the W P P A, Larry mentioned, your technical grant around Mason County Port bringing in E D C. With the recompete and the Hookin' Out Communications.
There's also other, besides the port, as a government agency, there's also a ton of nonprofits like, say, Ho. Uh, to help us deal or help us, uh, educate the Latino community.
Mm hmm.
And Seho is wonderful. Uh, they can help us, so, uh, we can get, we can get something. Okay, and I I believe me, I'm still, I'll be spending all day tomorrow working on another, so.
Okay, I like it. I I wanna put that up there in in the mix of the.
In our existing one, let's not forget the Oyster House. It's already called, we get this done.
Right.
Um, and so we're waiting, I see that we're waiting to get the.
We're waiting on the on the plan until we get the plan, we can put it down there.
So it sounds like, um. That will be a whole other project, you know, I have tons of pictures, but I'm gonna start requesting help to. Get the interior done, um, cause I have pictures of what it used to look like and some of those were really, really, you know, really cool. So let's keep that in forefront again on the top of our current list, so we won't forget that. We did a grant money for it to get it done.
Well, I would put, they obviously water is high priority and the way this is listed here and the Oyster House is second priority because it's been such a long. Drawn out task, right?
Yeah.
At the very least. And then I would like, uh, before the end of the day, actually prioritize it in a number. And then at some point it can be a break on that where it's like, okay, this is a five year and these things can hang out down here at the bottom. I would like to see it as a column one day.
Yeah, I, for some reason, we did not do that and I can't remember why. Big, I guess, is because they're, you know, because it's a living document, I guess that's why, but.
But when we come out of these, we we can always reprioritize that, but this is an opportunity to really. Make some decisions about the priorities, because we obviously know the first couple few aren't, but.
Yeah.
Go from there.
That's great.
Does that help Larry? Like, what what is, we're dealing a lot with it.
True, third direction. Yeah. Great. That's great.
And that would, if we were to select a date where we go out and meet the public. I don't know a whole lot of people in Bel Air that understand how important the water district is to the Allen area. Uh, you know, Lakeland is about ready to expand again and will that mean more water up there?
Mm hmm.
Well, there's two sides that I'm calling, how important it is to the health of the port with the revenue we get back. Cause they invest in the port as with their tax dollars, so it's a win win. And then that's part of our communication when we bear that head and talk about it.
Okay, well, lunch is served and we got one o'clock with the lawyer.
Yes.
So it might take ten minutes and.
Yeah.
I don't wanna eat a lot.
No, not the way I see it.
Are you gonna have public comment?
At the end of the meeting?
At the end of the.
At the end of the meeting?
After the executive session?
Yes.
Okay, I can't. I can't stay, sorry.
You can chime back in, I'm sorry, because we are agenda, we're gonna do that comment at the end of our meeting. We're here till two thirty, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, no, I I'm unavailable. Sorry about that.
You can, Ken, you can write it down and email it to me.
Uh, okay, uh, I do want to want to say that I looked at your agenda. And the location of where you're meeting is not on the agenda.
Uh, the address, I was told that it was the address was there.
The address, the address is not on the agenda.
No, and they posted. We posted it for the address.
But I see you're right, that it's not on the agenda.
That's true.
Okay.
Well, I would really like to just give you two minutes of comments.
Sure, go, well, I don't mind if everybody else doesn't mind.
I don't mind.
I I would like to because I can't get back on. I've got a another commitment.
Okay.
Thank, thank you. This meeting wasn't advertised real well, so that's why there's not a lot of public in attendance. But regarding the comp plan, uh, I like the ideas of pursuing broadband and the industrial park. Uh, sports complex. Um, but I really think that folks should take a close, closer look at the Sweetwater property. And I'd like to see it removed from the comp plan. Just for the record, the property was obtained back in nineteen ninety six. Uh, for the school, it was a grant written by Neil Werner of the Salmon Center. And it was obtained through grant monies. That's why it has to stay with a, an organization. Um, also for the record, the property is in the Skokomish Tribe's historical area, not the Squoxins. And I believe from talks I've had with the Skokomish Tribe that they'd like to see the dams on that property removed. Um, the widening project and the restoration of Sweetwater Creek will have a significant impact on the property. And the property isn't contiguous with any current port property. Mr. Coppola made some comments earlier about the Sweetwater price tripling partly because of opposition to the project. Um, and I'd like you folks to share that comment with your attorney in your executive session. And also share the email I sent to you all on August fourth. Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good lunch.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I I didn't hear that part. I was about to, you need to shut the radio down. While we're, while we're eating lunch, can you shut it down?
At least, can you mute us at least?
Uh, or take us off the, just for lunch, for, yeah, just for, just for, and we can even, uh, announce that.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and announce that we're gonna adjourn the meeting and then brief and begin that.
Okay, we will adjourn the meeting. But not adjourn, we're going to recess it, um, and then we're gonna go into an executive session at one o'clock. Um, we, I can't remember if we were gonna allow an hour or thirty minutes. Well, we better do forty five minutes.
I would say thirty.
Thirty minutes?
Yeah.
Uh, thirty five minutes, cause it's a little bit before thirty six minutes. We will reconvene at one thirty.
Okay.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, good, here we go.
Okay, uh, we are done with executive session. There was no, of course, no decis- decisions. Um, and so now we will open up the regular meeting or the regular special meeting there.
Good.
So where we left off was with the.
Well.
I'm sorry, the, um.
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive scheme of harbor improvements. Thank you, Larry. Sorry, lunchtime, it will bother you here.
Happens to me all the time.
Yeah. I think we pretty much, um, finished that. Can we go into the roundtable discussion?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Well, one of the things that was brought to our attention, um. Kingston, Port of Kingston, would you guys like to talk about it? There, this is just kind of.
Yeah, and I I read that letter. Uh, we were past the, uh, deadline to sign on to that letter.
Uh huh.
I agree with that letter. I wish we would have, uh, got a little bit earlier notice on that. I think it's something that the port con. Uh, would sign on to, but it's past that deadline.
Yeah, I got that.
But I would support the Port of Kingston and every other port that signed on to that. I think WAPA signed on to it for part of, uh, W P P A, so, uh, I think our sentiments are there. That things need to be changed, uh, so anyways.
Well, just for the general public information too, uh, what I'm trying to find the letter here was, um. They were talking about trying to get permits, I think, for. Um, Habitat Conservation Calculator, the extra cost that is gonna take, uh, cause there's some new. New developments in regard to getting projects done on the water and that was their concern. So they were writing letters to NOAA, if there is. Um. Also to federal, well, trying to think what else here.
It was the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah.
Uh. Uh, US Department Ecology, yeah. And that needs to be done. Our our permitting system through the feds and even through the state has gotten so complicated. That it requires a force, a higher permit analyst to do it, which costs a lot more money.
Yeah.
To the force, so. In the old days, you used to be able to go through a checklist, get it done, have somebody come out and review your project and then get it done.
Well, and now there's credits that they're, that they're charging and so that adds the extra cost and. So anyway, it's kind of a synopsis of everything.
Kind of what we're learning over the, uh, Oyster House.
Yeah.
Having to buy credits or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Gosh, I I don't really have anything else in regard to the roundtable. Uh, one thing we can talk about the Oyster House, by the way, because we are getting. The, uh, foundation design, getting that done, correct? And, um, now that we are kind of changing the scope. Uh, hopefully we'll have enough money to finish the exterior and interior, well, mostly the interior.
We'll have some, you know, it's gonna depend on the the cost of the foundation and the cost of moving it.
Mm hmm.
But what's, you know, what's left?
Yeah, we can use that for that.
Well, we have, we have a hundred thousand dollars left in the first grant.
Mm hmm.
And that'll probably get eaten up with the engineering from, and the permitting. Okay, but we have three hundred and forty four thousand in the second grant. So that should move the building and get the utilities hooked up to it and the rest of it is, you know. I mean, even if it's a hundred thousand dollars, there's still two forty four left.
Well, and I think that would be enough to finish the interior because there's, there's still, uh, walls that need to be put in. Uh, there's, you remember the concrete tables on both sides? Those are really unique.
Yeah.
I mean, of course, they were that thick that we won't have to have it that thick anymore.
You know, Don could probably build those walls and stuff.
Yeah, true. And he could, actually, he could start that anytime, I suppose.
Yeah.
But, um, there's cabinetry that needs to be done.
Pardon?
We'll need to track its time for the reimbursement.
Yeah, we need to track it this time.
Will we do that before we move it or do it after it's moved?
I think it's next, it doesn't really matter.
Doesn't matter.
I wouldn't do the concrete before we move it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I would think we don't really need to pour concrete with granite.
Yeah, true, because the whole point is to have the replica of it, yeah. But like even the cabinetry, now we saved some of it in the little office and they were all custom, you know, fit, custom built to fit. So those are pretty unique. Um, and again, the concrete tables. For, you know, cleaning the oysters, those were pretty cool. And the stanchions to hold the concrete, those were all, um, octagon shaped. They were pretty cool. It was, um, well, Don could could form that kind of stuff. That'd be great.
So what, John, I'll wait till.
Okay.
And John has a bunch of stuff he wants to talk about, but I'm not real sure where it all went.
Okay.
You know, he had me write these job descriptions for myself and my aunt.
Mm hmm.
And I basically took them out of the governance manual and then adapted them to what we do.
Great.
And like on mine, I know it's woefully short of all the stuff that you do. But.
That's true, cause you're. Where would he ask? Yeah.
That's like lying, it's like.
Yeah.
Right, and somebody says, what do you do with the port? It's like, well, where do I start?
I always liked that question. What is the port?
Yeah.
And what's a port do?
I think it took me at least a couple of years to really wrap my head around it. I would just sit in that office when I started and I would read everything I could read.
Yeah, I'm gonna say port stuff.
Oh, you know, old port stuff.
Or where do we start?
Our goal is to bring a, a big, uh, cruise ship into the Port of Allen.
That one always corrects me when it comes in.
Yeah. Let me see if I can use that one.
Is there a horn honk switch somewhere?
Well, generally, you push this button, but it's coming into your watering.
Yeah.
And generally, you push that.
Yeah, it's usually that easy. It's not got power to it.
The blower?
Yeah.
Is that just bad having an adapter? Or does the plug go directly into the machine?
That's great, man.
Here we go.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we're done.
Okay.
We're done.
Well, I did, kept touching it and there we go. Okay.
I can make it work.
Yeah, turn it on.
Hey, old Chichi Chang. I'm cheating about that.
Hopefully that'll work.
Guys sitting there watching TV, uh, nothing on the TV and. Or, yeah, I've been doing it the whole day. So what do we mess with? Cause, um, well, what you do, man, turn it on.
So. We were going to, uh. We were going to, uh.
Okay, Ken, you wanted to.
Yeah, one thing we were gonna do is prioritize, I think we already have it done. On, on the survey, water district. And break it down, what we're gonna try to do, uh, so it's one, two, three, four, like, like John said.
Sure, we could, we could go through that. I mean, we could, but you wanna wait till after we get the survey, or you wanted to try to get this prioritized today?
I'd like to see what we do with the prioritizing that, and then we can adjust fire on that, and, uh, get the survey back. I, I think we're almost there, we said water district, uh, number one.
Yeah, water, and actually, it's called water system, not water district.
I'm sorry.
Big difference.
Yep. And number two is the oyster.
Oyster House.
Yeah, number three would be broadband expansion, yeah, broadband in number three. Uh, number four would be development for commercial light industrial park, which I would. I would group three, currently three, four together, development, commercial indoor shooting range. If we could do that in conjunction with the, with, uh, the light industrial park.
Okay.
And then.
Light industrial and shooting, uh, range.
Yes. And then, we have, uh, uh, Sweetwater Park. Restaurant, and then the skateboard park. But the state.
Sweetwater and what?
Uh, skateboard park.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
What about, but, what about the, um. Recreational soccer field, or whatever you ask?
No, I, I still think that's important, but we could also combine the skateboard park, if we were dreaming. And it became reality, I would think that the, uh, soccer baseball combination plus a skateboard park.
Yeah.
If we had the property and money to do that, we'd be combining together, so. And then we have white rail from Belkin, just joking. All right. So. Those were my ideas. Yeah, no, it, that's, we, it's everything we talked about, so you're, you're spot on, uh, so. And that's where the efforts are, um, see, obviously, the PUD can't be all the same. But if you look into the PUD, for example, then we are explaining that, because we're looking at light industrial and a shooting range. But, and so, we can keep those two together, commercial light industrial, the shooting range together for now, and then, uh. The, uh, the skateboard park is kind of over here, but we'll see what we're gonna do with, um. But right now, like the Sweetwater Park is still in the top five, because we have to make a decision. Right?
Yeah.
So I would say that's number four right now. I've got it right behind those things.
Okay.
What do you think?
Well, water system is first.
Right, water system, oyster house, and then the commercial, uh, light industrial with the shooting range concept, number three.
Well, we gotta have the oyster house up there.
I, I know, it's number two.
Okay, oh, so now you're saying Sweetwater Park is number three.
I was saying Sweetwater Park is number four. Uh, no, yeah, no, but, you know what, Sweetwater Park's number three, cuz we need to get something moving, good battery, ugly, either way. And then number four is the commercial light industrial part of the shooting range. And, and only because it's a moving target, we can be flexible, we need to find out about PUD, so I'd say that right now. We're there to be looking at that, and maybe we can move that around later, because that might grow into something more where it comes into number six. Which, in my opinion, is the, uh, the, 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 the baseball combination, the sports complex. Be the number, whatever that ends up being now, I think number five. I would still like to have our plan, just because Port ten, and the port's mention is broadband expansion, uh. But, or, oh, yeah, yeah, broadband. It doesn't have to be the first or last, it's just the port, the port has the ability to, uh. Do this with all the grants, so I just like it on a list, I mean, we could. We can put it last, it doesn't have to be last, it's just something that we're thinking about. Okay, let's do number six for broadband, broadband.
Just say partnering with other agencies.
Exactly, other ports, other agencies, other nonprofits.
To expand broadband and.
Cuz that's reasonable, say that's within our five-year plan. Yep, I, I think it could be done, it'd be something nice that we can check off our list for in the states. Okay, and, um, moving along, uh, the North Shore idea. What, what, why don't we paint the murals on Highway three overpass, that's on here. Yeah, that's, okay, that's, that's, um, uh, Leanne can do that on Saturday.
We'll get that little gal that's doing the coffee stand.
Yeah.
But, uh, on a serious note, so we'll put broadband in there, and then, uh, the North Shore, number seven, I, I'm just. Everybody can put numbers where they want, but we can come together with it. I don't know if we need to put numbers, but just, do we have to put numbers on there? I prioritize it.
Like I said, we've never really totally prioritized, because it is moving.
Right.
So that's why we have, um, I would suggest that we, you know, we can loosely put it here, but.
There are three, another monkey wrench, uh, after Allen Days, after the theft that occurred at our shed. I would like to see us. Find a way to get somebody to expand that shed. And approve it.
Yeah.
We, we got hit pretty hard.
What, when did that happen?
It was the Friday before Allen Days.
Really? What'd they take?
It was when, they, we don't know when it happened, they just found out when they opened it up, and started putting stuff out, and they.
Oh.
First, they couldn't find their propane tank, then they realized all the couplings were gone.
Yep.
From all the connections, yeah.
Was it an obvious break-in, or somebody had a key?
No, I don't know, I, I, all's I heard was, uh.
It wasn't obvious, but Don said it's really easy to get that door open.
Yeah, okay.
You could use a credit card and pop it open, and then shut it behind yourself.
Oh, really, and with that, uh, and Leanne can tell you, it's a great cooking station, uh. If, but I think we can approve it and make it more secure, we do need a shed.
They don't even have a hasp and a lock on, they just have the door knob.
And maybe that's something we could partner with the ACA, uh, uh, talking to Richard Bell. He agreed, Jason Laws agreed, that maybe that's something we could do, but that shed needs to be. Knocked over and rebuilt, so. What about, uh, having of these, this stuff out there now, you can just replace it? I don't know what the permitting is, will require, I know last time Larry, you were looking at building something, the county wanted. Us to go through a big permitting process. Why don't you have a pre-made shed running? It'd have to be pretty good.
Wait, are you talking about the carport thing?
No.
The one down near that fire pit?
Puts her muscle, or she puts her.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but. I thought John asked something else.
Yeah, I did, why can't we just replace it, and just tear it down and put a shed, pre-made shed?
I know there's bigger setbacks from the water, so if it changes its footprint, it might not be able to get that permitted.
But a shed is, is not permanent.
Yeah, if it's, if it's just a shed, it's not permanent, you have permanent on, permanent.
Yeah, it's, the shed is not, and, and anything usually that is ten by twenty.
Yeah.
You don't have to have a permit.
Yeah, less than two hundred square feet.
Which kind is not ten by twenty.
But they would.
It's smaller than that.
The gazebo up at the kayak park, because it was.
So it might run under the same problem we ran into trying to put that gazebo at the kayak park. Which was the hundred and fifty foot.
Setback.
Setback in saltwater.
But it's already existent.
Yeah.
Can we ask the Allen Community Association if they would, uh, share the cost? Or if they're interested in that, so they're interested in partnering, uh, but that, that shed holds a lot of equipment. A lot of stuff in there, and. I don't.
No, it's not a ten by twenty.
It's smaller than that. So if we had a ten by twenty pre-made shed, and just put it in there.
Roll it in there.
I'm asking.
How does that work with all of our wellhouse?
Can you look into that, Larry, and see?
Is it, one half is our wellhouse, the other half is their shed, and it's.
Oh, I'm building, okay, yeah, that I didn't realize.
We, we could, something we could look at, it, it's. After Allen Days this year, and after hearing what happened, I'd like to see something down there a little bit bigger, nicer, uh. Still use it as a cooking station.
Yeah.
Because of the people that do the fry bread, and Leanne with the mussels, I mean, it's a great little station for them to have right there. Uh, but we need something bigger, cuz what they store in there, it's a jigsaw puzzle, what they put back in that place. Yeah. I don't, I'm tired of the theft, I, I really am, I'm tired of our port being hit with thieves, so. Does it have to be down there, can it be up to about four? I don't know where. If we got a shed, maybe there's a better place for it. At the same time, it's, what's really nice is, is ours, big event, Allen Days. That thing is there, it's easy to move things out of, it's easy to work out, uh, and it's. And that location is perfect for what we do for an all-day event, so.
Maybe just rebuild that one and make it more secure.
That would be about thirty, thirty thousand, I would think, tear it down.
I don't know, you know, just build it on the same footprint, so we're not dealing with permitting issues, but just. Actually. The entrance is like, the only thing needs to be secured, isn't it?
Yeah.
Then maybe just put a set of. Doors in there, or garage doors, something like that.
Amazing, but you're probably right, thirty grand for this little, probably. But that's why I like the idea of looking into a shed.
I think to look at it with Don, and we'll see what we can figure out.
Yeah, sorry to throw that out, but I. Oh, and so I went down to use the restroom while, when I came back, and the rest of them were filthy. I mean, I, I don't think that they're gonna be clean, because they've been around for so long, you know what I mean? But they just, they don't, they're not, they're not nice. They're just, they're old and dirty.
They need to be power-wired.
Yeah, they do.
He does that, he uses.
I know he does, I mean, huh. Yeah, I mean, keeping up with them is a full-time job.
I bet it is, especially this time of year.
And Don, and Don's not very happy about having to do it to begin with.
I know, I'm sure he's not.
Would it be worth it having somebody come in and do just that?
I don't know.
Restaurant, and have somebody just one that was involved the job, and nobody else wanted to deal with it, just.
I don't know if I got it at a bad time, if you're on, on the concrete.
Nah, you know, I've looked in other times too, and they're, they're generally not very clean. But they get beat up a lot, they get a lot of use. I mean, if we replaced.
Partner, I wonder if Linda would want to, cuz she's.
Yeah.
She's by there probably almost every day, just lives in San Hill.
You know, um, we've replaced the toilet paper holders several times. And ended up getting them made out of steel, so people wouldn't steal the damn toilet paper.
Another, another thing I want to point out, when we were down there, you know that glass, uh, art piece? There was broken glass in the ground, I don't, I don't know if it's, I don't know if. Somebody had some color, I don't know if it came from that, cuz there already has that jagged look to it. But take a look at it and see if it's the same art piece that we got.
Last time I looked at it, I don't know, a week or two ago, and it looked okay.
Okay, I was in there about a week ago, too.
I'll take another look.
Yeah. Oh, on our five-year plan, we didn't include exploring, replacing, uh, replacing the pier.
Oh, that's critical.
And, and like I said, I, I agree that these should not be, they should just be four, uh, items, not numbered, but, uh.
Yeah.
Replace what?
The pier.
That's gotta be in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. It has to be in there, otherwise, cuz you don't, you don't get trans, so.
Yeah.
Anything you can think of, we need to put in there.
Yeah, okay.
Cuz it has to be in your comprehensive plan, otherwise, then, if it's not, you don't get grants.
That's right, okay.
Well, John, you had a bunch of stuff you wanted to talk about.
Well, we, we've already done, the main, the main thing was, um. That, wh- what this looked like as far as due responsibility of, of y'all staff, and then, uh. Um, the mission statement, I wanted to go over that, you know, and I, I like what it said, I'm, I'm just wanting to. I wanted to make sure we're taking that into the vision for us as a force when we're talking about content, but that was pretty much it. And then the other, uh, thank you, and the other issue was, uh, and thank you, Leanne, on the public records, uh, we get that. But to make your job easier, our takeaway from what we went to the meeting, and obviously you've intended recommendation. Is whatever we can do to make it more transparent, didn't use that word, but that's what we're trying to do, is a website, getting everything on there. Getting everything on there.
That's our plan, that's why we're getting Erin in to help with financials.
Okay.
Yeah, she was supposed to come by Tuesday, but she didn't, but she had a doctor appointed in the mornings.
So, a- and so, if you look at, it might look like this, right, and you to that point, if we can get there. And you, you're gonna be, okay, well, thank you for that request, if you have any more questions, feel free, uh, to get back to me. On the website, here is that information you're looking for.
Yeah, you have to provide it.
But we gotta make friends, can't be a treasure hunt, right?
You know, there's a bunch of stuff on there already.
Yeah, her comp plan was in that. That's a pardon? Her comp plan is in on there.
Yeah, well, I think this is pretty critical.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's a couple, just a reminder, that's one of the things that needs to go in the comprehensive plan, too, is making sure the pier gets in there. And, uh, you know, all these other little updates, just to get those in there.
Okay, I'll get time for after them.
Okay.
Meeting, cuz we got a meeting, what, a week and a half now.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll have it, I'll have it done for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Then you all can approve it.
Right.
And then we do a public hearing about it and be done with it.
Okay, great.
You know, you all approve the draft, we do the public hearing, you approve the file.
And we should be starting on the budget again.
Yes.
It's already that time, October project, yes.
I wanna work with Erin on that.
Okay.
Because we can do the budget in bias, we just don't know how to do it.
Okay, great.
So. But, you know, we can sit down with her and do it in a couple days. So, and if I have to, I'll go to Manchester, where she works. Because it's like, you know, half a mile from my house, and I'll just sit down with her there, and maybe you come, and, you know.
So a big kudo, uh, for that, kind of settling in with that, it's a really good fit in combination. Uh, with the accounting or affiliation, combined with what your strengths are, right? We all have strengths and weaknesses, so, I'm very happy about this.
I think we were hoping Sunshine would have done a better job, cuz I put her on records, and the records retention schedule. And she just started putting files in boxes.
She was, she was a cracker, hell.
Yeah, she didn't understand, that's okay.
We, we came to a conclusion, she's never worked in an office before.
Yeah, and just cut her hole.
All right.
So is that something that we need to look for temporary again?
No, I think we figured it out with having the relief through Erin.
Absolutely.
That takes a huge stress off of me, and I've already got, I've already started getting supplies, and I've got it formulated in my head, what I'm gonna do with these records.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can concentrate on that.
And then also making your public records, uh, responsibility, that you all do so, that you do so well already, easier, less high maintenance, right? So.
And I'm gonna limit it, when Brad comes back around, um. The law allows you to limit what you work on records request to ten percent of the time. So I'm gonna keep a file on each one of his requests, and I'm gonna log in on whatever time I start working on it. And I'm gonna log back out.
Well, there should be a log, anything like that.
We have a log, but this is individual files, I mean, these are gonna be so deep.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm, I'm just figuring out. Well, yeah, I, at the state, we have, I think we have three or four people at Department of Fish and Wildlife, that's all they do, is public records.
Yeah.
And, and so, is it just for the size of your agency?
Yeah.
That, okay, all right.
Um, another question, you know, uh, like a school district has mentioned, I mean, that they sent all of their. Information, their public records to the state.
Well, that's what we were working on with Sunshine, so.
Okay.
We got all the boxes from the archives.
Okay.
Everything, which makes it nice, because if the records they're looking for is at the state, then the state.
Yes, well, that's why they did that, and that's why I was gonna finish saying, is that.
Yeah.
If we put it in through the Washington State Archives, and you just give them the link, and then they, then the state is required, so.
Yeah.
I think that should be a goal.
That's a, that's a.
That is the goal.
Very good, yeah.
But don't we have to maintain records, uh, during a certain period of time?
Yeah.
For certain records, ten years, five years, but we have to maintain.
Certain records are different timeframes.
Right, okay.
But we, you know, we wanna have everything on the website.
Yeah.
So we have easy access.
Yeah, Brad, go to the website.
Well, and it becomes, uh, anything, anybody can find anything for the history of the port, as long as we have record of anything. And it's, uh, it's fitting for the community to know that, for anybody that wants to do an historical, you know, uh, finding. Or anything that is there, not just for some. Not just for someone who wants a public record, but, well, they do, it is still a public record, but that there, it. It, it really is, uh, that'll be fun when we get to that point, I'm really, really excited about.
There's some good software out there.
Yeah, the software.
Yeah.
There was a software program that they mentioned at our, at our Oliver meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And that I don't have with me, that was the other thing that you said I had to bring up.
For, for public records.
Yeah, send me the uh, an email afterward.
Was it the public record software you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't remember.
Well, I think we started to investigate that, because that's been around a while.
Yeah, and I mentioned it too, yes, but I don't remember what it was, the name of the software.
It was, it was too expensive, we deemed at the time.
Oh.
However, when you bounce it up against what we're paying in legal fees in my time, maybe it's not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe it doesn't exist.
We're gonna look into that, I guess.
Yeah, because the after all, I'm gonna hand you an email.
So far, we're on time, um.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to approve that letter?
No.
Okay.
No.
No. Uh, okay, um.
No.
Okay. So far, we're doing good on time?
My decision.
Oh, okay. We can't go, is there anything else for our roundtable discussion or future direction? Cause then we can go into public comment.
I have nothing else, I'm.
I would say, you know, I don't know what my timeframe is to retire.
Mm-hmm.
We've had three different people look at the magazine, be interested in back out. The last one being Vanessa Crowley. Uh, she just like goes to them. So we're kind of back to square one.
Are you, are you?
We sent uh, sent copies of the magazines with letters to every printer in Washington, Oregon, and Idaho this week. And just said, if you have any customers that are thinking of expanding, you know, send them our way, because. You know, if we put something together, you're gonna have two publications to print. So, you know, that's a motivation for the printers. We did get one from Spokane that called us the same day, so I don't know. But I mean, I hate to. To hang the porta. And I don't wanna leave. You know, I promised Judy a year ago, I would not leave us an alert here, that, you know, I wanted. Everything to be organized and, you know, and fixed, not where I left.
Probably why you can't find a buyer yet.
Yeah, that's probably, yeah, but, you know, it's, it's one of those where. You know, I'm not dragging this out, I just assume, get these stuff done and be able to go.
Yeah.
I have talked to a couple of prospective replacements.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, I can't tell them any specific timeframe either.
Right.
So.
Are they from, are they within the area?
Pardon?
Are they geographically in the area?
Yeah, one of the kids have one in Mason.
Okay.
So, you know. But I don't wanna be in a situation where after I leave and something goes wrong, say, well, Larry's, that's Larry's fault.
That shouldn't happen.
Well, I wanna minimize that, you know, so. But anyway, you know, I, I just wanna be open about.
Yeah.
Cause I know Ken keeps saying, you know, have you started the replacement process yet?
Yeah, when the time comes, we'll get that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we will.
Lord, Lord willing, God's will.
Yep.
And, and whatever actions we need to take.
You know, but I'll be sure whoever it is is up to speed and, you know, ready to go.
And we'll vet them properly, as we should.
Well, what we budgeted for was for them to have a month. You know, with we still here.
Yeah.
So that was the budget last year.
True.
And just a phone call away, right?
Well, there was a lot of times we had to call Bonnie.
Yeah, and my employment contract, because I have to give you thirty days notice, so.
I didn't know you signed a contract.
Pardon?
I didn't know you signed a contract.
Oh, yeah, years ago. And it just renews itself.
Okay.
Yeah, Jean Farmer signed.
I mean, that's normal, but I, I've never seen it at all.
It was so long ago, Jean Farmer signed it. Thinking of, somebody told me, Randy told me. That when Jean Farmer's time and the port of Greenfield is up, that she intends to come after us.
Okay, you know, we'd be in the corner.
I have no idea why.
I don't.
What about, you know, ain't Randy?
Well, I, yeah, I, I don't, I, I think Jean has a lot more integrity, so. Uh, if Jean has questions, she knows who to call.
Yeah.
She'd call any one of us.
Well, I'd like to make you aware that he told me that.
She's a fellow port commissioner, she's been through it, she knows what's going on, so she, I think Jean and Tom are some of the good people in our community, so they. They would just call us, so, or, or tell us that, hey, you did this wrong, or you did this right, so.
Well, like I said, I just felt an obligation to tell you.
Okay. Uh, I have nothing else, if anybody else, and so I do wanna thank you all, this is, one, it's a great location to have a meeting, I feel very comfortable here. And thank you, Larry and Leanne, and thank you for lunch, uh. But uh, I wanna thank you two commissioners, I think we've had some really good dialogue today, and yeah, it's always nice to be able to talk. Amongst the three of us, or five of us, but uh, and get some of the opinions that we can't put out in a, in our meetings, but uh. Yeah, thank you again, appreciate it.
Well, having just a different scenario just kind of helps, so.
Yeah.
That's why I appreciate them letting us use this facility.
One of the benefits of membership.
Yeah, that's great.
And this is something that, to be honest, North Mason could use a facility like this.
Yeah, I agree, that's true.
Um. Yeah, I think the only.
To turn our conference room into something like that.
Well, let's look at the P U D place, right?
Besides the library and our spot.
Look at the old police department area there, what kind of building you're sitting here and go there.
Well, I think that, I think that.
I don't know what that, I don't need to worry about that.
So why aren't they, why aren't they moving it?
I don't know, well, they, the, the police department is gonna move to Old Belphar.
Yeah.
Uh, at the fire side.
Yeah.
But that building there that sits there at the intersection of uh, Old Belphar Highway and State Route three, that.
Yeah.
I don't know why that hasn't been torn down, prefer to do something, but I know when, we used to have a police department in there. The sheriff's department, uh, we moved out because of the infestations in that building.
And mold.
And mold, yeah.
Yeah.
And a couple of gut, holes in that thing, so, uh, but, yeah. Like, uh, anyways, I don't know why that building still stands there, that's a great piece of real estate.
Yeah.
So I don't even know what belongs in it, but, I don't either, anyways, uh. Yeah, it would be nice to see the police department move on Old Belphar Highway.
Yeah.
And I feel sorry for those sheriff's deputies trying to merge on the State Route three for what they're at, so.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it's been a great location for them, Farley did a nice job getting the sheriff's department there, but it's time for them to move on, so. Yeah.
Yeah, Randy was hands on, trying to make some of that work out, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, he has, but, uh, oh, one other thing is that the Shelton Veterans Village, if you haven't gotten a chance to tour it, uh. Please take the time, I know it's, it's off John Perry Road, uh, close to the hospital, John Perry Road is just. I'm trying to remember the name of the road, but it's just off the right outside.
Okay.
Head toward Shelton, toward Walmart, but uh, we decided. Could be, no, it's past one there, uh, but uh, uh, just, it's not in the Port Valon, but it's a nice facility for veterans. Uh, it's, they're basically studio apartments, and United Way decided that we were gonna make sure each one of those places have a crock pot. So we've been doing a crock pot drive.
Oh, cool.
And our goal was to get thirty, to make sure each one of those uh, places have a small crock pot. And uh, we were already there, people have just, we started off on August fifteenth, and people, veterans, uh. People have just been donating, and I got schooled on what size crock pot, four and a half quart crock pot, that's a perfect size, and uh. It, it's gonna be nice, we're gonna donate them, or give them to them, hopefully next week, and every other crock pot we receive is going to the uh, veterans. So, we'll drop it off there, but yeah, it's a neat facility, the director, a really nice person, he, uh, he was the director out at the veterans. Uh, home down in Orde, and it'll be nice, hopefully, uh. Hopefully it accomplishes its mission to get people off the street, veterans off the streets, and give them a good place to stay, and they can move on to bigger, better things, so, yeah.
Hey, one last thing that you wanna deal with Ken's complaint?
I think we can talk about it, I guess.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna say this, it's a personnel issue. We don't talk about personnel issues in public, it's personnel.
Thank you.
And it's, it should, if we wanted to do it, it should be an executive session, and, but we do not talk about personnel issues, uh, that's my opinion.
No, that's totally right.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Stop room.
I'll second it.